I would like to call to order this meeting of the Brookline School Board, June twenty fifth, twenty twenty five at six P M. We have a couple of agenda adjustments to start. The first is a request was made that the agenda be adjusted to include, under deliberations, board action on the resolution to authorize one million, one hundred and thirty one thousand, no, yeah, one million, one hundred and thirty one thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars of the lease purchase financing of energy conservation equipment and related building improvements at district facilities. An additional request was made that the deliberative item intended for the board action regarding the public hearing on the maintenance expendable trust fund also include action related to the public hearings on the retained fund balance and that the special education and the special education expendable trust funds. I will make a motion that the agenda be adjusted as requested. All in favor? Perfect, thank you. Alright, we're gonna move on to nominations, resignations.
I had a question about the agenda, just in case we had to make. I don't see the committee reports on here, am I looking at an old?
It's under E, number two, it says committee update.
Got it, thank you.
No problem.
Perfect.
Alright, any other questions? Okay. Nominations, resignations, correspondence.
So I'm just gonna be giving an update to the board, because you did grant Gina permission to do the hiring and to accept resignations. So we did receive a resignation from Liam Tremblay, who is the K to six music teacher. So we are currently trying to fill that position. And we had a resignation from Melissa Leaf, grade five teacher, who will be going to the co-op. For hires, we have hired a school nurse for C S D A, we have hired Melissa Mack, master step fourteen, seventy eight thousand ninety four. So still to fill, we have the K to six music, grade six long-term sub, grade three long-term sub, grade five one-year interim, and school counselor long-term sub.
Can I ask, obviously without violating any sort of confidentiality, was there feedback on your music position, because I know we've had feedback in the past about the schedule?
It says that he's going closer to home.
Okay.
So the fifth grade interim, that will be to replace Ms. Leaf?
No, the fifth, the grade five, oh no, so we also have the grade five, that literally just came in, that resignation. So we will have the five-year interim for Ms. Cantone, and then we will have to fill Ms. Leaf's positions for grade five as well.
Okay.
And that's all I have.
Alright. First, we want to, I've got one correspondence I would like to read, but before I do that, I do want to recognize Jonathan Verdi, thank you very much for your time with us, we wish you all the best, and we are sorry to see you go. But we do wish you all the best in your, in your future endeavors, a little token of appreciation.
Awesome.
Alright, and then I have this correspondence to read. This is a message of gratitude from the Brookline School Board honoring Principal Patricia Boulay of Captain Samuel Douglas Academy. Tonight with full hearts, we wish to honor and thank someone who has given so much of herself to our school, our children, and our future. Principal Boulay, your years of service to the students and families of Captain Samuel Douglas Academy have been nothing short of extraordinary. Through your leadership, our upper elementary school has not only grown academically, but it has thrived as a place where students are seen, supported, and celebrated for who they are. You led with strength, compassion, and steady purpose during the most difficult of times, helping to guide our school community through the challenges of the COVID nineteen pandemic with courage and care. In moments when answers were few, your calm and thoughtful presence grounded us all. But your legacy extends far beyond those hard days. You spent your career lifting up students, encouraging teachers, and building a school culture rooted in respect, joy, and high expectations. Whether it was in the classroom, in the halls, or at countless events and meetings, your belief in our kids has been unwavering. One of your lasting contributions will quite literally be grounded in our school for years to come. The new playground you helped bring to life is more than a collection of structures, it is a symbol of your belief in play, in possibility, and in childhood itself. That is why we are so proud to dedicate the C S D A playground in your honor. Every laugh and every game on that playground will carry your legacy forward. The inscribed rock to be installed will read, "Play is our brains' favorite way of learning", Diane Ackerman. The Brookline School Board dedicates this playground to Patricia Boulay in recognition and thanks for her commitment to creating a place of play and creativity for our students.
You're gonna make me cry.
Everyone's talking about it all. As you step into retirement, please know how deeply grateful we are. You have left a mark not only on C S D A, but on the hearts of all who have had the privilege of working and learning alongside you. Thank you, Principal Boulay, for everything. We wish you joy, rest, and new adventures in the days ahead. You will always be part of our community. With gratitude and love, the Brookline School Board, June twenty fifth, twenty twenty five.
Thank you so much.
We also have a little, another token of appreciation.
And we made this for you, speak with you, but it is a picture, C S D A, yeah, it's even kind of. So it says, "A leader takes people where they want to go, a great leader takes people where they don't necessarily want to go, but want to be."
Aww.
Thank you so much.
That is beautiful.
Thank you all. You're brilliant.
Thank you all.
Absolutely, our pleasure. Do you need to turn that in for?
Yeah, I think I'm gonna keep a copy.
I don't know how we could, like.
I think you used.
Yeah.
Tried, okay.
It's gonna suck for failure here, Alex.
Alright. Approval of minutes, so we have, from the Brookline School Board, May twenty eighth, twenty twenty five meeting, the following amendment was offered. Page seven, line four, to replace request with result. Page eight, line seventeen, to correct the spelling of board. Page eleven, line six, correct the spelling of alert. Page twelve, line twenty-three, delete R. Can I get a motion to accept those?
I will make a motion to accept the May twenty eighth, two thousand twenty-five minutes.
All in favor? Alright. Let's see, and I see to accept the non-public as presented?
Uh, we don't, we don't need to, you could skip that.
Just kidding, alright.
End of your presentation.
Alright, so we're on to the principal's report.
Which, which for tonight is gonna be the end of the year presentation.
Right, end of the year presentation. Dan will start, Patricia, so you can.
Yes. Alright, good evening, can you all see this okay? So first, we're gonna just start off with a different presentation, it's from the P T O. This is a slideshow we put together, and it relates to our year in review. As you know, our P T O is very supportive of our schools and our students, and they do a lot of fundraising throughout the year to support the learning and the programming at our schools. So this is just gonna take you through the year of events that they sponsored, and just showing you our students that there are multiple trips in programming. Our grade three visited the, these are just some of them, they visited the Lowell Mills this past December. We have grade K had Lindsay at our puppet house that visited in our library. They also helped support our program for forces in motion for kindergarten. Our second graders got to visit the C Science Center in Manchester.
Wait, Dan, excuse me, do you, does, Joe, does Dan need a mic? Or do you think he's?
Be able to come up high.
Okay, just, just double checking before we.
Really projecting.
And this was, this was nice too, because at the C Science Center, the students had multiple labs that they got to experiment with. Grade two got to visit Beaver Brook. Having a great time, I believe this is early April. Eyes on Owls came and visited our first graders in the gym. This is, um, we've had them year after year, great program. This is the one time that we have pets in our building. Grade one visited Stone Zoo, great field trip. First graders always love this, we have lots of parent volunteers that come, so we appreciate all the volunteers as well who come, support us to ensure the safety, but also the enjoyment of the kids. Now let's go back to this. Oh yeah, that stuff. And then we had Friendly Farm, I think it was in late, uh, early June, kindergarten visited Friendly Farm, they loved the chickens there, my goodness.
They have chicken-related casualties.
Yep, and then grade three visited C S D Woods, and this is kinda like their first time as a grade going to C S D, so they get to go through the woods as a grade level, and then they walk through the hallways of C S D A, and then they meet with, they used to meet with Mr. Boulay, at this time Chaz Miller came and he got to meet all the third graders, he also went on the walk with us as well through the woods. Third grade also had Geodomes, and then grade six Brown Center. So these, most of the programs that the P T O supported us with this year, and we wanna thank them for all their support.
Well, and Dan, I just want, did the P T O also help the preschool go to?
Care Farm.
Yeah, so we wanna give the P T O for that as well, because that's a very valuable project.
Yeah, there's, there's a few other events, we just had some quick pictures this side. So our year in review, we showed this back in October, so this is just a, we're just revisiting this to kinda summarize our year, as we just, now, no, we have the now Boulay Playground. So the now Boulay Playground is built, was built. Administration Board and Planning Board have initial discussions regarding Brookline's population growth, and we continued our off-site evacuations, we've had a successful one at C S D A, also at RMS, we had successful one at the Safety Complex. And then for budgetary action steps, we are looking at lighting controls, boilers, air handles, and A C units, which we will present again in the fall when we go to look at our budgets. So I would say we met that goal, and this was our infrastructure goal. Trish, you good if I just?
I'll check.
For future ready, ooh, I don't know how that got over there, but we can delete that. Our highlights for S E L were, school-wide behavior matrices are continuing throughout our schools, we did those two years ago, we just continue to refine them, reflect on them, and those are part of our morning routines in our morning meeting, they're addressed at assemblies in the lunchroom throughout the day, there's different components of our matrix that hits all aspects of our building. We continued our Blue Jays and Paws awards at both buildings, grade six went to the Brown Center for their field trip, grade level guidance lessons happened throughout our buildings, we had full implementation of morning meetings, K through six, which all the teachers are loving, the students really respond well to them, we had school-wide assemblies, and then as you saw, the presentation earlier was our P T O sponsored events, which support the whole social-emotional learning aspect. For essential standards, many of you were able to attend both of these RMS and C S D Steam Nights, we had the RMS Pangaea Mini Golf around the world, that was a highlight of our year, the students did great, they got to really practice their critical thinking, their problem-solving, working as a team, practicing those innovative skills that they have, and at C S D A, they had a curriculum night to summarize their school year and their academic achievements. Do you wanna add anything about the curriculum night, Trish?
Yeah, the thing that we changed this year is that we made it relevant to exactly what is being taught in the classrooms, so parents could actually see, you know, what's the progress that students are making on different projects, and they also got to take part in some of the lessons. For instance, you know, what is taught in the health class, and how does that class actually occur in the, in the gym? And parents actually got up and got involved with the actual lesson, as the students were kind of taking the focus of it.
For habits of the learner, we continued and refined our M T S S district-wide process, that includes our S S T meetings, our student profiles, we deployed Eureka Math squared, K through three, and we also deployed C K L A, the pilot, grades four through six. Our next step is, we're having C K L A implemented K through three here, which will now have K through six involved with C K L A, and then we are going to be utilizing our new M T S S position to support these areas, along with any M T S S areas that we do address. And then our fifth goal was, our highlights were Parent Square was widely used, this has to do with communication, Parent Square was really well-received by the parents and the community, it's been used for field trips, I would say there may be one or two families that don't use Parent Square to pay for the field trips through Parent Square, our newsletters were successful through Parent Square, our classroom announcements each week, those are highly successful, we're seeing a lot of parents viewing those. And then our next step is looking at how we can integrate the clubs and programs that you can sign up for, we used to do that through My School Bucks, we can look at that through Parent Square as well.
Would you guys be looking at potential, putting like lunch payments on there, or is that a different program entirely?
Potentially, yeah, my, yeah, My School Bucks, I believe, is getting a little bit more costly, so that might be another thing that we'll have to, that might be a good question when Gina comes back.
I don't.
Yeah, I don't.
Unless Lauren, you know, but.
I don't think.
Oh, Dawn is here, sorry, Dawn.
Parent Square doesn't do, um.
Oh, lunch, we, that's obviously.
Who's, sorry again.
So we'll, yeah, if it is getting more costly, that might be something for us to look at in terms of an alternative.
Yeah, it does the newsletters, it does the field trips, and it can do program, but lunch is a completely different. So those are our five goals, any questions about the five goals that we presented?
We've got lots of feedback about the staff, which was great to hear, do we have any feedback on how the kids were responding to the goals? Like, just in terms of, like, in the morning meetings, from the kid's point of view, the curriculum nights, things like that, like how were the students, the new rollouts of the curriculum, how were they responding?
I will say, I'll speak about the Eureka Program.
Yeah.
It's the first program I've ever experienced in my over twenty years in education that students and staff have loved. I've never seen a program so well-received by both. It's, it meets all the students where they're at, and it goes at a very developmentally appropriate pace, and the teachers feel really successful implementing as well. So there's been much success with Eureka, and we're gonna show some more school reports in a minute too. As far as morning meetings, I mean, through my walkthroughs of the building, I'm constantly seeing them, there's good discussions being had, and our staff even went to doing closing circles, that's another aspect of responsive classroom, where you implement morning meeting, and then you close the day out with a closing circle to, you know, check in with everybody. So our, our staff was successful with that, it's kinda like a sandwich method, you know? Trish, wanna add anything with that?
Yeah, I, I would definitely say that with the C K L A and Amplify, and maybe you can join in as well, I, I think the depth of knowledge is much higher with the students, and particularly with their writing, they, you know, they had workbooks, I'm sorry, they have workbooks to answer some of the key questions for their, for their text, but the biggest thing is that they actually enjoyed and understood, like, when it says, provide evidence, or what type of evidence the, the questions were asking for, they were able to go back and actually practice and understand what that really truly meant. I also saw an increase in their vocabulary knowledge, and they really enjoyed the topics. They, they really covered, you know, from science, social studies, so it kind of, it was a cross-curriculum, which was a nice addition.
They are well-versed in yellow fever, and.
Yes.
I was also when we focused.
Oh, yeah, they were, they were like, they had, you know, caution tape and, you know, different, they were, they went all in, and the end of the year for sixth grade, they did a whole unit on Titanic, and so each student was given a passenger, so they became a passenger and went through the entirety of the experience, and at the very end, they found out, did you make it, or did you not make it? But they, I mean, there were some of the units were highly, highly engaging, and the, and the students really, even outside of their E L A block, went kinda down the learning rabbit hole, which is what we want, we want to beat their interest, so.
And they, and they learned about chocolate.
They did.
And, and what the.
The history of it.
The history of it, and who actually, you know, has to go out and find the chocolate, and.
And they had a whole debate, almost like a debate team, um, episode, so I went, I had been walking through some of the classrooms, and the students were ha, they were engaged, like, highly, so, on what arguments they needed to have, and what supporting evidence, so, because they wanted to be the debate winners. I said, this is good, having a effective argument with evidence behind it, it's great.
The nice thing about C K L A is how well it integrates the science and social studies as well into, into our day, which is nice.
The, the topics range a lot, and, and I know that, because my child does homework in the car, and so she's just doing all of that.
Yep.
And so I got all the topics, and I was well-versed, it was, it was good, because I was like, oh, that's interesting, and then the next would be something like.
Totally different.
Totally, yeah, totally, it was great.
It does run the gamut of a whole bunch of things, so.
It was fun.
And Joanna, to answer your question about responsive classroom, how the students respond, really what we see is more of a connection with the students with their teacher, by having that morning meeting, they feel that sense of belongingness, that connectedness, it kinda jumps starts the day for their learning, so it's an important part of the day.
Jonathan, you have.
Yeah, no, I just, the, um, the Blue Jay Awards and the Paw Awards, I know we've had specific staff really focusing on really utilizing those to reinforce inclusivity of students, and we've seen a really nice jump in feedback from a lot of them, where once they sort of realized, if I do include them, if I do engage, right, it is showing community, it is showing all these other things that we value, and in some of these classrooms to a point that, right, it's, it's now sort of faded, where these kids are just doing it as just part of who we are and what we're doing, even to some wonderful emails we've been able to send home, with some of our students who have communication deficits, who are openly greeting peers in the hallway without being prompted by anybody, so it's, it's really cool to see.
Right, I love hearing the staff feedback that I also, I love hearing this feedback that the students are responding as well, because I think, we certainly want curriculum that the staff are excited about, but we equally want curriculum that people are excited to learn, because I would imagine that also decreases issues in the classroom, if they're interested.
And the nice thing about the Eureka Program too, is that there's a homeschool connection piece too that goes home, which is nice to support families at home, so they can talk about the concepts that are being taught as well.
Can I just add one quick thing, I wanted to just comment quick on your communication, I just wanna say you knocked it out of the park as a school district, because I'm just saying it quick as a parent, I've got a high schooler, I've got a middle schooler, and I have an elementary school child, and it was very difficult for me to get five different communications last year, when I had like, just the first grade newsletter and then the others, but now it's all in one spot, so I just wanted to just say thank you so much as a parent, that has been so incredibly beneficial, so, great job.
Great, thank you.
This is our slide showing the percentage of students considered low risk on AIMS Web, if you would like to speak to it, you're welcome to, but as you can see, our, the blue columns are last fall, and the green columns are this past spring, so you can see there's some great growth across the year, which is what we wanna see. And this is for math.
Good job.
Yeah.
We're happy about this.
Yeah. A lot of green.
So, same thing, but for reading, as you can see, like kindergarten doubled there, so fall is the blue, spring is the green, grade six knocked it out of the park, hundred percent of low risk.
That's amazing.
Is, is, just a quick question, is this like, are you seeing kinda typical trend with this between, like, because obviously in the fall, they come back, right, they're gonna be a little lower, because they've had that gap, but then obviously we've got this big increase, like, is this like normal trend, or are you seeing that, like, some of this curriculum that we've implemented, do you, are you finding that maybe it's even actually bumping it a little higher?
Yep, so looking at, because I'm a second year, right, so I'm looking at last year's data versus this year's data, I would say, right now, the Eureka math program at RMS is showing a higher math amount of growth in math than we did last year.
Okay.
Similarly to a lower level at, for C K L A, for, for E L A, so that's exciting.
Yeah.
Um, and then obviously for kindergarten, like, they're coming in.
First time.
First-time school, so like, we would expect a tremendous amount of growth.
Yes, absolutely.
I will say though, coming from other, other districts, like, this amount of growth, the amount of students at, considered low risk at the end of the year, is extraordinary, like, that's not typical, so we're, we're super pleased with that piece, and then we're looking at, you know, what are those next steps, and how do we increase it even more and make it even bigger?
And also, the AIMS Web, the, the benchmark, it gets challenging as the year goes on too, it's not the same exact assessment, as you take a fall, it's.
Right.
It's going.
The, the threshold.
The threshold.
Gets higher every, every trimester, so.
Can you guys just clarify for me too, what do we mean by low risk?
So AIMS Web defines it, they, they have a nice little triangle thing, but they call it tier one, tier two, tier three, I don't love using that, because then it also gets confusing with, like, R T I programs and different things of that nature, so they consider it low risk as in the chances of the student by the end of their school year, or by the end of the next measuring period, meeting average, attaining an average, being in the average or higher band, so it's like low risk of not achieving end-of-grade level standards.
Okay, yep.
Yeah, so AIMS Web does a low risk, medium, moderate risk, and then high risk.
So in, in looking at that then, like, our sixth graders are a hundred percent, we're confident that them going into seventh grade by the end of trimester one, we're conf, we have a pretty good feeling that they would all be meeting where they need to be at seventh grade or above.
Yes, based on the snapshot of AIMS Web, on how they performed here.
Yep.
Yes, it doesn't always translate to other assessments, but yes.
Well, correct, no, 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 correct, I'm just saying for, for purposes of like, explaining this.
Yes, yeah.
With it being low risk, like, we don't, we don't have any concern sending our current sixth graders off to seventh grade, and them not being where they need to be or better by the end of the first trimester in, in seventh grade, is kind of what this is.
On the skills, they're dismeasures.
Right, yes, well, of course.
Follow, just a quick follow-up question, obviously without specifics, but if we're identifying students that say are lower, or really are at risk, like, are, aside from just like general classroom, are there strategies that are being pulled into the classroom to help bring these students?
Absolutely, that's where our data meetings come in, and our M T S S meetings, so at the beginning of the year, we look at all of this information and data, and we say, okay, the kids who are, you know, well above grade level, what are we doing to extend their learning? At the students who are kind of that, you know, at grade level, right where they're supposed to be, perfect, let's keep on going, kids who are just below, what kind of supports in the classroom can we give for added learning, closing that gap, and the ones who are maybe showing they're at a higher risk, what are we doing to give, you know, intervention in whatever areas they need, targeted pieces, looking at what, what areas within AIMS Web they're struggling with, what's, looking at the classroom and kinda targeting from there.
Okay.
Yeah.
Just, just because I know sometimes, not everything gets caught in testing, and not everybody can get tested for it, so just making sure that we're trying to catch some of those kids that maybe aren't at severe enough of a level to require a separate testing, but still need extra supports outside of just.
And this is just one piece of data that we look at, we also look at a bunch of other things, to kinda be like, okay, what is the student, how, you know, they might be doing super great on AIMS Web, but they're not showing it in the classroom, so what's the barrier there, and how do we knock that down? Or students who are tested, and testing is not their jam, but they can, they're doing really well in the classroom, so why are we gonna pull them, like, so we have, we have to balance it and look at the students, but we look at all of that.
Well, and I think that's, I think the balance is partially why we're seeing such great numbers, it's because we are balancing that, so it's good to hear that that's something that's not just kind of based on testing, because you're right, not everyone wants to test.
Or it's a rough day, or, you know.
Yep, so that's, that's great, okay.
And the nice thing too is we do it fall, winter, spring, so we get the, we have multiple check-in points.
With progress monitoring available too, so if we have students who are showing a risk, we progress monitor them throughout to make sure what we're doing is meeting their needs and having them grow, so. Yep.
So moving on from AIMS Web, which we used throughout the year, we're going to SAS data, and this is our longitudinal data for each of our grades, so for E L A, reading area, this past spring, our grade three scored sixty-six percent proficient or above. Grade four was in the forty-ninth percentage area, grade five was sixty percent proficient, and grade six was seventy-four percent proficient for the SAS statewide testing. And as you can see, that's our historical view of that, and then we have our cohort, so here's, last year's grade three, and this is where they scored this year in grade five, I'm sorry, grade four.
What, their color?
Their color.
Yeah, their color.
Yeah, so it's a staircase effect.
Really hot outside, I just wanna.
For math, I'll speak for grade three, we were really, really proud of our grade three students, throughout the entire SAS assessment, we got audited this year, both RMS and C S D A, and we had great results from that, but for our grade three students, out of the eighty-one students that tested, over half of them were proficient with distinction, and I, I don't remember a time when we have ever seen that, which was outstanding. And again, staircase effect, so you can see, like, here's where grade six was this year, and then how they've done over time, same with grade five and grade four, and this is grade three's first time taking it. What Mrs. Boulay and I, and Mr. Verdi, Mrs. Peterson, did see is the students. Um, what Mrs. Boullet and I and Mr. Barry and Mrs. Peterson did see is the students came ready to take the test. The teachers did a great job preparing them for the test to help relieve that anxiety, but really the students put in their best effort. Um, very minimal disruptions, but very focused. They really put in a lot of time and effort. Again, this is a one-time test. Um, so that's our math data.
So I just wanna also, if you're correcting my memory, but I just wanna offer commentary on the fact that statewide testing is very different than AIMS. So again,
Yes.
We are, we are targeting like, so like it, cause I could, I could see, you know, myself as a parent, if I wasn't carrying this explanation,
looking at this in a way, why is it going down? Why is that right? And so understanding and just framing it that this is one test that's gonna test a specific kind of way, but we are targeting across, so how they're measuring here may not be actually indicative of how, where their level is at.
Could be, yeah.
It could be, okay.
Additionally, we, what we, we're working on now, and we have some summer work, um, planned for July is looking at like cohorts that are re- regressing, like going from say, I don't know, like sixty three or fifty six we're looking. I, we've started to delve into deeper into the SAS data, cause they're, we are able to get reports showing which standards we performed above proficiency, at or near proficiency, or below proficiency. So we're, I'm looking at, um, which standards were below proficiency to start, and then where at CSDA, where our invigils, lessons, and, um, teaching hits those standards to make sure we shore those up moving forward.
Well, and I'm seeing too, when you look at the color coding, you can see that it looks like there's almost always a little bit of a regression between the fourth and fifth, and then they kind of bounce back. I mean, I'm looking at that green one, so spring twenty eight, like, they went from forty sixteen.
Yeah, they tend to bounce back when they hit sixth grade.
Yeah, so it's kind of like, it seems that you're like switching to the school, settling into an existing, like also my impact. Okay, I just wanna provide that framing for people so that if they're looking at these numbers, they're not panicking that like necessarily we're at under fifty percent,
Right.
but it's just understanding that it's like fine, and then we're digging it in the system.
Exactly.
And they're two totally different assessments.
Yeah, yeah.
And then this is our grade five science data. And now we're on to behavior. So this is our grid from last year that we presented at the last June meeting compared to this year. Um, this year we had seventy nine percent of our students, um, two hundred fifty of our students out of the three hundred eighteen. So in our print study report, you would've saw, there's three hundred eighteen students. There you are. So two hundred fifty out of three hundred eighteen had zero instances of behavior, which is phenomenal, uh, which is pretty much aligned to last year's eighty percent mark. Um, and then again, ninety percent of our students, two hundred eighty five out of three hundred eighteen had one or fewer instances of behavior. So ninety percent of the students doing, doing great. And then we had about three percent of our students this year that had fifteen or more incidences of behavior. And then these are the incidences by month. Um, I will say that our September was higher than last September, last year's. But from October through February, we did see like a, a thirty percent decline in behavior, which was great. And then for whatever reason, in March, we had a two hundred seventy percent increase. So, March, April, May, June, we're very, very busy this year.
It's a really long month.
Isn't it called March Madness?
March is really long.
March Madness. That's where it's located, March Madness.
Some of those kids get real spicy in between February break and neutral break.
There was a lot going on, steam nights, leprechauns, I mean, it was all.
Leprechauns.
It was pretty busy.
Now, can I ask you a cool question?
Yeah.
The the incident numbers by by month.
Mm-hmm.
In some cases, those may be the same student with multiple incidents.
Yes.
Yep.
So in terms of like the MTSS and the responsive classroom, I know it's not necessarily something you would tie bus behavior to, but like again, like with kind of our our target points and how we're addressing incidences on the bus.
On the bus?
On the bus.
So like, so are we prepping, like I guess what I'm trying to say is like, are we prepping kids at school to be, like, are we prepping bus behavior at school? Are we just crossing our fingers and hoping you're the best?
No, I mean, if there's a bus behavior, Mrs. Boullet or I got a bus report, and then we review the matrix with the students. We have social stories that we go over with the students.
Right, okay.
We did some role playing with the students. We'll watch videos and double check that that actually happened, because sometimes the bus driver's lost them a different.
Right. But but even, you know, when we have assemblies or even in the classrooms, we remind students that, you know, when you're on the bus, that's part of school. You're representing school and the the same expectations for behavior in school is the same on the bus.
And we're very fortunate.
And we're, and we're also very active as far as, I'm on that, I'm on most buses almost every day. If I'm there at the end of the day, I'm visiting buses, reminding the whole RMMS and CSDA.
And we're very fortunate in this district. Our bus company works really well with us, and they invite us over whenever we wanna review a video. Um, there's good communication, um, with them, and we work really closely with them so that we can prevent this. And if there are continued issues, then it results in taking the student off for a bus. And we have that progressive discipline where now it's a one day suspension, now it's a two day, now it's a three day. And we work with the family too, but, you know, we try to teach the kids, the kids, how you behave in the bus should be very similar to how you behave in your parents' vehicle as well, you know, so we want your safety.
Okay.
CSDA.
And for CSDA, seventy nine point two percent of the students had zero incidents of behavior compared to eighty two percent last year. Um, and eighty nine percent of the students had one or fewer incidents of behavior. And three percent of the students had six or more incidents. And as compared to even last year, it's, um, October, November, December is kind of consistent. We had a higher um, number of incidents in December this year. Um, and then, but, uh, and again, we also grew in the February, March, and April time trend this year.
Yeah, March.
I also feel like it was super cold this year, and it was pretty warm in December, so maybe the weather just like really started to roll in, I don't know.
Yeah, maybe, but that does seem, that does, at least at CSDA, that does seem to be a trend of patterns in the past couple of years, so. But I'm glad to see that the numbers have declined. Um, we did actually have more than last year, but overall, um, compared to the year before or two years before, I'm, we're still down like sixty four percent.
Right.
Um, and then as, you know, you're talking about bus incidents, we actually had, um, I had less, um, almost half, um, bus incidences this year. But I will also say that as Mr. Molinaari was saying, I also had a lot more bus suspensions this year. So those were very effective.
And and these include both minor and major, all in this, so we count each one as one.
Yep.
So next steps and considerations, um, we're going to continue implementing and refining our responsive classroom in all of our grades K through six. Uh, continuing those discussions like the bus, but also what, how we behave in the lunchroom, how we behave in the hallways. We're going to be rolling out the MTSS intervention position, um, which will also be a support. So if, say, a student does come up for an academic piece, but also a behavioral piece, we will be able to deploy that person to go do some observations and maybe support the teachers or help out with some tips and tricks to support that student. Um, behavior response and crisis team updates, we're gonna work as a K through six district with that. Um, professional development of tier one classroom management, we're looking into some trainings for when we return back to school in around December uh, to support all of our classroom teachers. We're going to be deploying Amplify in grades K through three. We're gonna continue implementation of Eureka Math in grades K through three, and then also CKA grades four and five and six.
Yep.
And then for budget focus areas, um, we are looking at a, we're proposing a behavior specialist that will be between both RMS and CSDA. Uh, we are looking at, we have a lunch recess mon- I'm sorry, lunch monitor at RMS currently. Um, but we're going to be looking at adding another one, but really the goal is to get one at CSDA, so we have one of both buildings. And then we're looking at our music and art teacher. Um, we already had the discussion earlier about, do we have the funds to make that up a one point O, or do we need to do two halftime positions, just different options, um, because there's split time in both buildings.
Can I just ask, so the behavior specialist, are you thinking about like an additional BCBA, or like can you just like what that would be?
Yep, I'm gonna explain that, because we actually are putting that position in now for FY twenty six. You're gonna see it on FY twenty seven budget because it wasn't budgeted. Um, but for FY twenty seven, it'll go in that budget as a new position, so you'll see that. Um, so this is a behavior specialist who is in training to be a BCBA. So they work in our district, they get their hours, and they work under our BCBA. But they have all that same training and that same pieces they work towards, towards their license. So they'll be split, um, across both buildings, and we do have somebody.
So both, so both the overseeing BCBA and then the.
And the behavior specialist. Yeah.
Will also be split.
Yep, our our BCBA has been split.
Right.
Right, in general, yep. And then the behavior specialist will also be split. So they'll be working together and, you know, working together on plans and support across both buildings.
But they might have separate, like, students that they work with, so like.
Correct, but the BCBA will oversee kind of everybody, but yes, but they might have specific, um, you know, as far as supporting the behavior plans and such.
And schedule, schedule wise, it allows their specialty to be in a building every day, right? They're typically not gonna double up in a building, so we'll have representation in both.
And then we just wanna thank you, the board, for your support this year, and, um, all of our families, and we wanna thank our teachers for their phenomenal performance day in, day out. It's not an easy job, but they come dedicated to our district and they work with all of our students, and they love and nurture them each and every day. And also, we we have awesome students here. We have great families, awesome students, so we wanna thank everybody in the community for your support. And we just wanna say thank you again to Trish and John, because we're gonna miss having them in the district.
Yes, we are.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for.
But you're still.
Thank you, good job.
Could I, can I ask just a couple of questions?
Yes.
Meg, we get, I feel like we get a lot of questions in the community about test scores.
Yep.
Could you educate me or us a little bit more on how we look at SAS numbers? You know, when do we get concerned, when, how do we benchmark against other districts? Maybe it just would be helpful if you kind of explained that a little bit, like for maybe parents that have questions.
Sure. Um, yeah, so when, in looking at the SAS data, when we get it, because we just got it kind of a few weeks ago, right, globally. Um, I don't know what was done before I got here, but moving forward, what we're gonna be doing is looking at that. It's it's hard because we get the data and then the kids leave us, and then we have a new crop of kids in front of us, right? So it's a great tool to look at for kind of global trends, and are we seeing any trends in any specific subject area? So what we're going to be looking at this summer and all of next year at CSDA, especially if they're focused, will be math. Um, because we have some, you know, some trends of regression in some grade levels, and we wanna know why, right? So is there something that we're, is our tool not what we need it to be? Are we missing something in the tool? I mean, our teachers are wonderful and they work super, super hard.
Yeah.
Um, so we wanna make sure what we're giving them as tools to use in the classroom are what are matching the standards that the SAS is assessing. Um, also, we're working on with kind of all K to six, increasing student stamina. So kids are doing, like we saw earlier, doing really well on AIMS Web. It's a very different level of stamina and depth compared to SAS. Um, so we wanna look at those pieces to see how can we increase their stamina and approach toward the SAS data. Um, in reading will be a shift for grade three. It's hard for grade three because it's the first time they take it. So it's, we're kind of flying blind going into SAS. We're using a lot of the modulators and interims to kind of get them practicing how to use the tech pieces, so that's not a barrier in having them perform well and show us what they know. Um, so we're looking at the tech pieces, kind of K, you know, three through six, mostly with three. So they know how to like click and drag and move things, and they have like double screens that the story moves and the and the questions are over here. So we want them to make sure they know how to do that. And a lot of them aren't great at using a mouse. Like that's not their natural habitat. They use like their thumbs and their fingers. Um, so how to drag things and move things is, I, we don't want, we don't want that to be a barrier in getting their knowledge like across, right? Um, so I've been working with Abby, who's me over in Hollis, and Gina are really looking at what, are there specific standards that we're not hitting effectively, and how do we approach that to move that forward next year? And then what are the tools that we have for math and science especially at CSDA level? And then backing it up all the way down to kindergarten to kind of lay those pieces to be stronger as we as we move forward. Did that answer your question?
Yeah, yeah, thank you. I think a lot of people tie, um, test scores to our funding and our budget and things like that. And so I I just, I know it like comes up on
Right.
the good old Facebook, so thank you, that's helpful.
And also, that recent post on Facebook was old data, too.
Yeah, yeah, no, I didn't. I, I'm not on Facebook.
Um, just to add, yeah, I was gonna say, just to add another layer, um, when I met with teachers, we meet with them at the end of the year, um, for them to update their goals with us and to see, you know, what were their individual goals and what, how, how much progress did they make on them or what have you. Um, but I also sat with each of the teachers to show them what their SAS scores were for their individual class, and then we looked at some of the students. Um, but I just reinforced also knowing the work that was going to be taking place this summer, um, and based on the scores, um, how how they could look at it and dig deeper as far as the data. So I want the teachers to be, be able to come to Meg this summer when they they do the summer work. All right, this is what my class is showing. This is the areas that, you know, is it how we're, like, Meg was saying, is it the materials? Um, is it our invigils program? Is there other gaps that we're not catching? Um, is it, uh, you know, can a teacher sit, look back and reflect and say, oh, you know what? I do remember my class had a difficult time with this particular lesson. Um, you know, do we need to have the math specialists come in? And perhaps, um, prepare the teachers a a different way to present the materials? Um, so those are kind of all the the types of areas that we're, that everybody will be looking at. So I was trying to prepare them, but um, I think that's important, um, to really, you know, we talk about teaching the students to dig deeper and understand what they're reading. Well, it's really important that the the teachers do that extra effort to look at what is, um, missing or what are the patterns that can be seen. And of course, also look at where are the areas of, um, great success by the teachers.
Yeah, yeah. So just one, I'm sorry.
No, you can shut.
Just, uh, Lauren, did you say the the, uh, behavior specialist was an, was a student teacher, or was they, were they working on something?
Oh, yeah.
Like a licensure or something?
Off on their licensure for for BCBA.
Oh, okay.
Yes, yeah, cause it's a very robust program to get a certification, uh, and you're licensed in BCBA, so it's hundreds of hours.
Yeah.
Um, well, I think it's even more than that, yep, throughout the program, so, yeah, so she's in the course of doing that now.
Oh, that's great, that's great. Maybe future hire if we need one.
Yeah. That's always what we're thinking of.
Um, just one other quick question, cause I I think you're doing a great job, um, really highlighting like the differences between AIMS Web and in SAS. Can you just kind of give me a feel too, like, um, cause A- AIMS Web, kind of give me an idea of like, like it's pretty quick, right?
Yes.
It's like one-on-one usually?
It depends. So for grades K and one, they have one-on-one fluency pieces. So for example, for reading, you're doing oral reading fluency, you're doing nonsense word fluency, whole word reading fluency. Um, and that's kind of it. And then you go to math, and it's some fluency pieces, but also concepts and applications, right? And you're, that concept applications, you're doing it on the computer as a student individually. Everything else is one-on-one with an adult.
Okay.
Right? Um.
And how long does that usually take?
It depends upon the student, some, it, about twenty to thirty minutes is what AIMS Web kind of markets, right? Some students finish it in like four, and some students finish it in three hours, just because it depends upon the student, right? But generally speaking, twenty to thirty minutes. Um, and it gives us some really good data on, it gives us a nice snapshot of where a student is generally speaking.
Yeah.
Right? Not a ton of able to like really dig down on the why they're really struggling in blank. Um, reading is a little bit better, math's a little bit more difficult, math's a hard one anyway, testing wise. With, um, SAS, it's a lot more multi-step, m- multiple questions, multiple parts, put it together, synthesize, analyze. It's a much higher level of questioning, um, and longer. So when you're reading a reading comprehension piece in AIMS Web, it might be a paragraph. You're reading a reading comprehension piece on SAS, and it could be seven paragraphs. And some kids look at that seven paragraphs, and he's like, nope, I am not reading that. That is a long stretch of reading. Um, so back to that stamina piece. Also with the questions on SAS, they're talking, you know, if you, and if you, reading paragraphs three, seven, and nine, where do you think this word fits best in vocabulary, and what do you think the author was thinking about A, B, and C? So it's a lot more of that higher order thinking, depth of knowledge questioning, um, that, yeah, so it's a different test.
Yeah, absolutely. And so, and right, they are testing multiple days, and like how many hours, like approximately a day?
Yeah, so AIMS Web, it's quickly do, usually it's, for the youngers, it's different because kindergartners can only handle it for a few minutes at a time. So we do, it, we finish it over two weeks at RMMS.
Right.
With sporadic times that we're testing.
Yes.
CSDA usually a day for the reading test, a day for the math test.
Okay, for AIMS Web.
For AIMS Web, yeah, and then or.
But it's in the mor- yeah.
It's in the morning.
Like, we give them, we give them like an hour and a half to two hour block.
Do it here.
But if the class finishes, they're done.
And there's a break day in between, if I remember correctly, right?
For A- for AIMS Web, we just kind of bang it out. Like usually it's like for SAS, we have, yeah, SAS, it's a, we give them a two hour block of time. The students are allowed to take as long as as they need.
Yes.
Um, typically, kids are done within an hour, hour and fifteen. But again, it ranges. Some students are done in twenty minutes, and some need multiple days because they're just taking a while.
And I noticed here, we saw fewer kids rushing to get it done.
We did.
Taking their time, which is great.
Yeah.
That's good.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, but so on average, it sounds like for SAS, it's about an hour a day for four days?
Um, but so on average, it sounds like for SAS, it's about an hour a day for four days?
Uh, yeah, up to two hours a day.
Up to two hours.
Yeah, and for ARMMA, for third grade, it's a day for reading, a day for writing, a day for math.
With a break day.
With a break day, similar to grades four and six. Fifth grade, you add another day for science.
Do you feel really quick, this will be my last question for them.
It's okay.
Is, is the SAS testing progressing? Like, does it change with like our technology and our curriculum? Like, back to what you're saying in terms of looking at like a seven, um, paragraph essay that they have to read? I mean, we are learning in a different way now with, like, I mean, even us as adults, like the information that's coming to us, like, you know, on our phones, I hate to say, but like, um, has, is, do you, do you find that SAS changes like with the, like progresses? Or does it pretty, does it stay pretty, like?
It's pretty stan, I, I, I mean, I haven't, I haven't heard that it's progressing. I would say the SAS that I've seen over the last five-ish plus years looks very similar every year, just different types. The types of questions are the same, the details of the questions are, they differ.
The grading of the writing has changed?
The grading of the writing has changed. Last year, they did, it used to be way back in the day, you had humans reading it and scoring it. Um, last year, they went back to that, which is why we didn't get our results till like the end of June, because it obviously takes longer. Um, this year, it's more of an AI with spot checks of humans. Um, so that made it, we were able to get scores back faster, which was nice. Um, so, but the test itself really hasn't, I wouldn't say hasn't changed much in recent years.
There's some practice examples, there's some practice questions for families to look at, too. Um, our teachers do a good job prepping, like we, starting in January, we try to have our teachers spend some time showing them how to use the tools and exposure to some of the questions, so that it's not a shock when they first see it.
Sure.
You know, it relieves that testing anxiety piece, too.
Right, and, and Meg had mentioned modulators, and that's what it is, it's practice. Um, and at CSDA, the teachers actually can use the modulators on their smartboard and to demonstrate. So they can solve a problem together or read a passage together, so that they can understand, you know, basically trying to teach them like, this is what you are expected to do and this is what they're kind of looking for.
Right. I just found this going was just making sure, like, I get that we have to like design our curriculum, right? So that we do well with SAS, but at the same time, right? Like, what if there's other things like that, we're being, you know, we're successful, ah, it's just not on the test, right?
Right.
You know, it is on the te, you know, you know what I'm saying? So I'm just trying to get a feel for just how it works better, so thank you.
Yeah, so I have a question on my account of that, Jonathan, this might be more a question for you, but like, I know in past experience, sometimes there's alternative testing too that's offered for students that aren't, just aren't able to complete this type of standardized testing. Are those included in these scores or are those?
No, no, it's a different.
Those are different?
Yeah.
Because I just was like, okay, those are included in certain of the scores?
And that's a really small, we have, I think, a very small number of students who
Yeah, who are going to have alternatives.
Yes.
That's, that's going to be part of its whole assessment score?
Mm-hmm, yep, yeah.
Do we get those scores as well? Or do we get like a sense of like where those students are in addition?
We, we get the scores, so we, we do get, I don't know if we had anybody actually take them this year. I think everybody exempted.
Which one?
Well, we have the
The DLM.
We had, we had a few students that get a couple.
Yeah, I think, I think, I think there was a couple.
We had two, I think we had two of them.
Yeah.
Okay, so, so in a way, we are tracking some of that as well to target them, okay?
Oh, absolutely.
Yeah, we don't want those lost.
Correct, correct, yeah.
I hate standardized testing. This is reminding me of like when I was in high school and I was like, oh.
That's taking us a skill.
Also, there's cupcakes, are there? Because my daughter will eat all of them and I'm not interested in that sugar rush, so.
Do you want to share, is it okay if we get a copy of the, the principal's report?
Yeah, I can, I can, I can send you a, I, I didn't, no, we didn't.
No, it's not a agenda, yeah.
We usually would, but it takes a lot of time to gather data, so we just, we had to wait till the year ended, so we missed that deadline. So I will share it to you.
We'll share it, yeah.
In a minute.
Thank you. Thank you. All right, anything else as we can send in the year report?
Great job, thank you.
Yes, thank you guys very much.
Um, would you, would the board be comfortable if we excused Meg and John?
Yes.
Yes.
I mean, I'm sure they'd love to hear the public hearing, but
The three public hearings.
The three public hearings.
Um, just before you go, Jonathan, for just, is there anything about special education that we need to know? Or the trust or anything that you would need us to know before you leave and we deliberate on that later?
No, I mean, I think the biggest thing that I'm excited for the district is that we've been able to bring in a lot of our, our own people to replace contracted positions, which, and our, our contracted providers have been great, but it, it is just a different sense of community when it's somebody in, in your building is there every day and wants to be here and continue. So, um, I know staff and admin and everybody else involved at the SAU, it's been a lot of hard work sort of getting to this place over the past couple of years, but I, I think it's, I think it's in tremendous shape to sort of take the ball and, and move forward with, certainly with special education and services for students.
Thank you. Thanks, John, thanks, Maggie.
Thank you, have a good night.
Thank you.
Okay, so we're going to move on to public hearings. We have three of them. We have the Maintenance Expendable Trust Fund, the retained fund balance, and the Special Education Expendable Trust Fund. So I am going to, I'm going to go ahead and make a motion that the board recess until the conclusion of the, of the three public hearings on the Maintenance Expendable Trust Fund, the retained fu, fund balance, and the Special Education Expendable Trust Fund are complete. Can I get a second?
I'll second.
Great, all in favor? Perfect, so we
And if anyone comes to the public hearings, you can also have cupcakes.
We are going to recess at six fifty-seven, fifty-seven, all right, so.
Okay, so I'm going to start by explaining, um, the first one, which is the, uh, expendable trust. So Principal Molinari and Boulay have identified several needed repairs and improvements for their buildings during the budget process. At the hearing for the FY twenty-six budget, uh, the Brookline School Board recommended that the funding source for these items, you know, be through the Brookline Maintenance Expendable Trust. So during the deliberative session, the amount going to the Maintenance Expendable Trust went from three hundred and sixty thousand coming from the fund balance to three hundred thousand coming from the budget. So the voters approved this change during the twenty twenty-five voting session. Therefore, this is the official request to use that expendable trust for the following expenses, but at a reduced amount. So you're going to see on this, I think you guys have in your packet, this outlines what the requested items are. So you're going to see numbers one through five. Um, that is currently the order of prioritization, but hard quotes are currently being developed. Um, if the total for all of them come in at three hundred thousand, great, and then we'll be, you know, all set to do all of them. If that comes in over three hundred thousand, which right now that estimate is three hundred and forty-nine thousand, seven hundred and twenty-four, then the one through five is the prioritization. Um, however, we're going to really look closely at four and five, the roof replacement and the bathroom renovations. Um, because if there, if the bathroom renovations are in a little bit of worse shape than the roof, we might swap those two out. So that four and five is maybe tied. And, you know, we're going to see what condition they're actually at, at that point. Um, so the items that you have listed here are intercoms and bells and phone, that's, um, phase two of that project. Um, and then related to that, there was, um, an additional expense to get them system going through FY twenty-five. That's that ten thousand, seven hundred and twenty-four that you see. Then we have the roof placement for the Milford Street side, the bathroom renovations at our RMMS, and then CSDA. We have, um, our step program and office renovations. We need to kind of reconfigure some space for the programs that are growing that are fabulous at CSDA, we're very excited about. So that's what we have here, um, for this first public hearing for the expend, uh, Maintenance Expendable Trust Fund.
Okay, um, do we ask questions before I open? Here, anybody who
Um, you could, you could ask questions now if you have questions and then we're going to open it up to testimony.
What is our, I know the hard quotes are being developed, what's our target date of we want them in and kind of solidified by?
Um, we're looking at as soon as possible, because some of these renovations have to happen over the summer, all of them. So we're looking as soon as possible, beginning, beginning of July, yep, as soon as possible.
All right, are there any other questions before I, okay. Um, so I will open this up for public comment at seven PM on the news. Does anybody have any, do I have to go through this with nobody here?
Yep, so you, but you don't, you don't have to do it twice, you can only do it, so normally we have to do it twice if there is people in the public. But there's nobody here, so you can do it once.
Do you have a question?
Yeah, just, so this is just kind of like, so we know that three hundred thousand's already been approved, right? You're just kind of giving us a heads up, kind of like, this is what the estimate's looking, looking like so far, but we, so tonight, we're just going to talk about it? No decisions to make just yet, right?
No, you're, you're going to vote later on, say, um, giving us the, the per, permission to spend the three hundred thousand that the voters voted on.
Right.
So you're going to give us permission to spend that three hundred thousand and then knowing that these are the pri, priorities that we'll be staying within for that three hundred thousand.
So it's a formality, right?
Yes, this is a formality.
You just need to know where it's going.
And it's also them making us aware that we, the voters that agreed to the three hundred thousand, the quotes are more than that. So they're working to see if we can get that lower, if not, the explanation of where they'll be a little given.
Yeah. Um, and, and just so you, the one piece, I'm so sorry, I did not go over, is the current balance of our Maintenance Expendable Trust is sixty-four thousand, eighty-nine dollars. So when we add that three hundred thousand, that balance, um, will be three hundred and sixty-four thousand, but we'll be removing the three hundred thousand. So we're going to stay at that same balance, the sixty-four thousand, eighty-nine dollars.
So I just, not necessarily a question, but we would just like to certainly understand, like, if bathrooms need to be flexible, but I would also like to keep down off the roof.
Absolutely.
If there's anything that we need to do to make sure that that
Sure.
Like he's not up there having to pass it?
Yes.
I would appreciate that being considered.
Absolutely, thank you.
Um, I will see if there's any testimony in favor and any testimony in opposition. And for anybody watching at home, I did that quickly because there's nobody here, but, so, I'm just calling that out. All right, so
We have to close public.
I know, so can I go ahead and I can close this?
Yes.
All right, so I'm going to close the public hearing for the, um, School Building Maintenance Expendable Trust at seven oh two. I'm just doing, I have to sign that after.
Yes, probably.
I'll sign your copy.
Okay.
Okay, I'm sorry, I hope I'm not like totally, because you're just closing. I just want to understand though, so if we have sixty-four thousand dollars in there and we're getting three hundred, right? Why can't we just, if, if it, well, that, can that cover anything that goes over? No, because it, that has to stay.
You want to keep a balance in that fund.
Money in the fund. One, you want money in the fund, two, these were the items I, I'm going to come wrong, but we asked the community for, these were things we were going to do with a price on it.
Okay.
So we don't want to go over that.
No, no, that makes sense. I just wanted to make sure, I didn't know if the, the fund was just e, extra money that we had saved from this past year that we, do you see them saying? That like now we could put towards that, I just tried to
Some emergency money.
Yeah, the money needs to stay in that fund, yeah, stay in that fund.
Emergency money.
So it's like, so like when the fire panels need to be replaced, we, I think this came from that, when the, if, fortunately, we are getting a new boiler, but like if the boiler had decided to take a little vacay, then the water would lose this.
Sure, I just didn't know if there was a separate, you know, like I was just trying to understand what that was.
It's a lot, I get it.
Yeah, thank you.
No worries, you're totally fine.
There's lots of funds in the trust.
Yeah.
Um, let's see, retained fund balance, is that next?
Um, we're doing the retained fund balance next, so we're going to open that at
So I'm going to open the retained fund, the retained fund balance public hearing at seven oh three.
Okay, and I'll give an explanation. So there's a business office memo that you'll find in your packet that pertains to this. Um, so as you know, the projected year-end balance is negative due to largely the number of contracted power educators that we had to hire. Um, we are hopeful there will be more potential power educators applying for FY twenty-six. However, we do need to cover this anticipated, um, negative balance. So in this public hearing, we are requesting to use the full amount of the FY twenty-five retained fund balance, which is a hundred and forty thousand dollars, to address what would otherwise be a negative fund balance at the year end due to these costs.
Does that cover everything?
Um, so it, it may, so we will know more as the year kind of rounds, rounds out and we usually have those numbers by August, would you say, Donna? That we kind of know-ish, August-ish. Um, but that's why we're going to have a Plan B, um, with the next public hearing. But right now, we're going to stick to the retained fund balance and using the hundred and forty thousand dollars.
And that will take that down as well.
And that will take that down.
If there is, so let's say things do come in, we don't need to use the full hundred and forty thousand, we would just leave it in the retain? Like, are we going to, do we need to get permission for that also, or is that just a given?
That would just be, that would just be a given if we don't need it and then it goes, it turns into revenue at the end.
Okay.
Yep.
Yeah, we're giving permission to, when we vote and deliberate on this, it'll be to give them permission to withdraw the whole hundred and forty, if necessary.
And then whatever is not used, it stays.
Correct.
Then it goes back in.
Yep, um, any other questions?
What is a retained fund balance? Like, what is the difference between the re, like, just help me understand what's, um, because there's obviously multiple, um, funds, right? So if, what is this one used for, if you don't mind giving me like an easy definition?
So the retain, do you want to jump in with this one, too? This one is, is not, is not my favorite. This is not my favorite one.
Maybe you just need to sit with Donna for like, maybe you could give me a tutorial, how about that? I don't want to take the floor down.
This is not my favorite fund, fund balance, it's money for the end of the year, go ahead.
Yeah, so the retained fund balance is, um, something that they try to carry over every year. So there's X, again, X amount of money for in case of.
Yep.
Like we were just saying, you want to leave some extra money in that, uh, facilities in case of something happening. Um, and so the board votes every year on how much they would like to be able to keep in the retained fund balance as long, as long as we have it.
Yeah.
And, um, unfortunately for Brookline, due to large special ed costs, we've been having to sometimes use the special, uh, I mean, the retained fund balance. Um, or we think we have to, but then once the final year is closed out, we, sometimes we settle out and don't need to use it. This year, we've been in the negative all, most of the year.
Yep.
Um, we likely will have to use some of it. We're hoping we won't have to go into the next plan of actually using the special ed trust. Because right now, if you look at, when I get to my, we, um, my report, you're going to see right now, we do have to use a special ed trust as well to cover where we're at. So that retained fund balance is just something that is there. And then, um, if it's not used, it's money that goes back to the taxpayers. So
Yep.
For you, it could, really you as a taxpayer, it's probably two dollars in the end that you're saving, but you know what I mean? It's just, it, it is a large chunk of money that we have the availability to use in case of emergency, but
Okay, and it's focused more around, so special education, but what, like, is there, like, anything other administrative?
It could be used for anything in, in the budget. The next, the next, um, one, I'll, I'll explain what the next trust is when we get to it, the Special Education Trust. But no, this hundred and forty thousand can be used towards anything in the budget. We were just explaining that largely due to special education costs, that's why our budget is in the negative.
But we wouldn't use this for facility stuff, right?
No, that would
Oh, no, 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 correct, correct, no.
So that's the previous maintenance.
Correct, that's the maintenance one, yes.
So there's a maintenance one?
Yes.
And then this one is specifically from administrative kind of things?
General, right?
Ge, general budget.
This is like general budget, as long as it was in the budget, not facility.
Anything that was in the budget for FY twenty-five.
Yeah.
Okay.
So we can, we could, in theory, and we're not going to, combine it with facility if we needed to, right?
Okay, that's where I just tried to
Well, I, I, well, you, you, you can't combine it for anything that was kind of proposed extraneous from what was included in the FY twenty-five budget. So all the items that were in the FY twenty-five, correct if I'm wrong.
I believe.
Yes, it's, it's, it goes towards the FY twenty-five budget.
Yep.
Costs.
And so our next budget starts on Tuesday, right?
July one, is that, yes, July one.
Yes, yes, yes.
Um, okay, and so is there, are we facing just having the same issue, but now with less funding next year? In terms of like being in the negative, with Donna's making a face.
No.
That's probably about to, yes, okay, thanks, Donna. Okay, because that's my concern, is that like
I hope not, but
Right, I mean, is there, is there always the chance, but, but we have our FY twenty-six budget, which is going to cost, which is going to, um, cover the cost that we have predicted for FY twenty-six, obviously.
Having to contract more?
So we are hiring and we are working to hire every single day, so we're not going to have that answer as far as how successful or not successful we've been till later in the summer. Um, but we are, I believe we have six power educator position open, openings. Right now, three in each building is what's open. So if those six, if none of those are filled by the end of the summer and we have to have six contracted providers, then that's where we're starting. Um, I I'm hopeful, and I'm more optimistic than most, but I'm hopeful that we will have w- w- at least, you know, three or four or five of those covered.
So if we were like, let's say, hiring mid-year, so like, let's say we had to contract in September, in the fall, right?
Yep.
Um, and we were able to either hire and or convert positions in-house, would that then, like, we would then start being able to like reduce the contract?
Correct, absolutely, yep, cuz we would, we would let that contractor go.
So it's not like a fine date for the year.
Correct, no, we can let go at any point. Absolutely.
Any other questions about this before I?
I'm sorry, I did have a bunch, so I'm not reading the manifests this year, but I I remember from when I was reading them last year, we do have at least a couple of people who are contracted. And they've gone from year to year, are those different positions than contracted paras?
So if, so we've, we had a long-term sub that was a contracted provider last year, that person is no longer here, we had a contracted speech pathologist, but we've now hired in-house, we're very excited for CSDA. Um, I'm trying to think of what else we had as a contractor.
There were at least two, two names that were listed, I think they were paras that were contracted, but they seem to be contracted through year to year.
There, there's, there's, there are two contracted paras that we have kept year to year.
Are those budgeted in, or is that part of this extraneous cost?
They're slightly part of the extraneous cost.
I'm not recommending you get rid of them, cuz I'm.
Yeah, I mean, well, and that's, and that, that's, yeah, and I don't wanna go into too far into detail regarding that, but if you, you know.
I'm just trying to figure out like, if those are different positions versus like ones that we wouldn't, so we, but we wouldn't consider letting those go.
No. No. Not right now. But in the future, if we were able to eventually fill, you know, it's a, it's a balancing act of predicting, cuz we have, I believe, twenty-eight, thirty-two power educators, I think we have thirty-two power educators in the district for FY twenty-six. So right now, with our CBA and all these other pieces, do I believe we're gonna hire all thirty-two? Again, I'm more optimistic than than most, but but I, it may, we we may not, right? So kind of looking at, um, but in the future, should anything change, and we would be able to, then we would have those contracted positions turn into employment positions.
Just trying to get a sense of like, what contractor, cuz I know, like, when I was reading them last year, there were, there were two li- like, more than one line for contracted paras.
Yes.
Trying to get a sense of like which ones are.
Yep, absolutely.
Anything else before I open the floor? Okay, I'm gonna open the floor for public comments uh at seven eleven, and see if you have any testimony in favor or testimony opposition, and again, going very quickly for those watching at home, there's nobody here.
Okay.
Alright, just like call it out.
Wait, we have to close it.
Oh wait, I do?
Uh, you have to declare this public hearing closed.
In that case, then I'm gonna declare this public hearing closed at seven eleven.
Okay.
Alright.
Alright, and the last one, so we have the special education expendable, oh please, thank you, I apologize.
Alright, yep, so I'm gonna open the public hearing for the special education expendable trust fund at seven twelve. Alright, Lauren, now you do that.
And this is also included um on the bottom of your um expendable trust sheet that you had in your packet. Um, so at this point in the year, we are not anticipating the use of special education trust funds for FY twenty-six, however, we are requesting to use up to sixty thousand for the FY twenty-five um budget due to the end of the year balance projected to be a negative balance. This request from the public hearing on the retained fund balance is to use the full hundred and forty thousand, but then utilize the special education expendable trust only if necessary, and only up to sixty thousand dollars. So right now, the special education trust, this would actually be the first time that this trust has been used um in my tenure here, um, which has been about eight years or so. Um, so what we've done is in, we've slowly added to this trust, and you know, looking at to keep, we kind of, you know, we're aiming for a balance of two hundred and fifty to three hundred thousand kind of as a safe spot because special education costs are vol- volatile and varied, um, you know, so we look to keep that balance. So right now, our current balance is two hundred and ninety-two thousand, two hundred and ninety-seven. Um, we're not, we're not adding any for FY twenty-six, it wasn't put on the warrants, um, so we would potentially use up to sixty thousand, we would not exceed that. So therefore, if we did use that sixty thousand, it would be two hundred and thirty-two thousand, two hundred and ninety-seven, and if it's not used, it would stay at the two hundred and ninety-two thousand, two hundred and ninety-seven.
With this one versus the retained fund, this one, would we specifically have to notate that we were using this to pay paras? Like, would it have to be tied to special education, it can't just be used for anything?
No, it it would be applied to the FY twenty-five budget as a whole, but our reasoning and your logic as a board is understanding that a great deal of the costs and the change in the, to have the budget be negative fell in the world of special education.
Right, I just wanna make sure that we're clear that if someone comes to me in the community and is like, are you guys slushing the special ed fund over?
Yep. Yep, no.
No.
No, it is understanding why. Yep.
Special ed hiring, and to order to meet our contracted needs for power educators, we need to take this money, so that's, that would be like, whoa.
Correct.
Just looking at the report, you see where the negatives are.
You're gonna see it, yeah.
It's our special ed accounts.
Yes.
Circle it for us.
Yep.
Well, I just wanna make sure there's.
No, absolutely.
That has come up a bit deliberative a few times, that people wanna make sure that we're not just like having hidden trust funds, and like, so I wanna make sure that we're, we're being very clear here that we're using the retained fund first because it's a, it's a budget issue, and if needed, we're using special ed fund to meet our special ed obligations that have come up over the course of the year.
Any other questions about this one for the board? Okay, I'm gonna open public comment here at seven fourteen PM, uh, any testimony in favor, any testimony in opposition? Again, quick and speedy, um, and so I'm gonna go ahead and close the public hearing, as nobody was here at seven fifteen PM.
Thank you.
Alright.
And that is it for the public hearings.
Do I have to reopen and resume?
Reconvene us, yeah.
I do, alright, so I'm gonna reconvene our board meeting at seven fifteen PM, but I don't need to take a move on that, right?
Correct, okay.
Alright, at this time, I'm also gonna open public input um at seven fifteen, and as nobody is currently here to provide any public input, we're gonna move ahead with our revenue and expense updates.
First of all, I just want to um speak again about that parent square question and food service, for Johanna, I think you asked. I might have misspoke, parent square might collect for food service, the issue might be our food service software, that was Mosaic or something? I think the issue might be between those two, but I do know that Kelly and Amy Cassidy have talked about the rising costs, and so I do think they're looking into.
Alternatives.
Yes.
Yeah, that's just something that I've heard quite a bit of, of like, parents are like, I'm trying to put money out there, but then it's also like a fee per so, if you have kids at different schools, it's like such a pain in the, in the butt.
Yeah.
Apparently Allison can speak too, and maybe others, like, if some of them are saying they're having to do more than one fee per group, I don't know.
Yes.
Yeah, cuz they have to do like separate schools, so I just think I would love to put out there that since I did feedback, we're getting it, there was a way to.
I do believe they have been looking into it, I just, I didn't want you to look up parent square and say, hey, they do do food, I think I might have misspoke, so.
Oh, no, I'm not, I don't think I looked at them, yeah.
Could you just take that as a takeaway, just to make sure that we're looking into that, because to Johanna's point, like, I was one of those parents who I put ten, fifteen on at a time because my kids are hit or miss with buying lunch, and then all of a sudden the fees went up, and I'm paying fees at two different schools, and so I ups my amount, but I know not everybody can do that, but then also then it's just sitting there because they haven't used it, and I can't get it back, so it would be great if we can.
Yep.
Look at that, it might, it might seem minimal, but.
Yep, no, definitely.
It adds up over time.
I understand, okay, so as far as the report goes, and as we were just discussing, um, if you just look at the second page at the bottom of the revenue, you'll see um our projected fund balance is currently a negative one hundred and fifty-six thousand, eight hundred and twenty-one dollars, and that's why we're proposing to you to use a hundred and forty thousand of the retained fund balance, which would leave us with sixteen thousand, eight hundred and twenty-one dollars still that we would need, and that's right now what we think we would need out of the special ed trust fund.
Can I just chime in?
Yeah.
Um, but there is actually um revenue that's going to be coming in, that will be between sixteen thousand and twenty thousand dollars that we're looking at, I, that was the, what I shared with you a couple weeks ago. That's included with a hundred and fifty-six?
That, I already, yeah, I already incorporated that.
Okay. Okay.
However, I, I will say that um last year, we thought we were gonna need to use a special ed trust, and we didn't end up having to.
Okay.
So, you know, when we get down to the final days, things shake out, other, other accounts, we can, you know, we stop the spending on other people and.
Is, is this something too that will may possibly be addressed with like the new step program going in at CSDA, like, is that, is, is that gonna impact this revenue at all with the special ed stuff? Like, I know it probably won't necessarily reduce the number of paras, but like having that space, does that, I don't know, or do you know what I'm trying to say?
No, I'm looking at Lauren.
I don't even know what I'm trying to say.
I, I don't, um, revenue how, like, I, I guess I just need a more context.
Assume we're just like, like, there are thirty-two paras, if we have kids in the, in this step program, are we still required to have that same number of paras? Like, I guess that's what I'm trying to figure out.
Oh, sure, so, I mean, yes, I mean, really, so the, the number of paras is driven by students' special education plans, right? So, you know, those are team, team decisions based on the student needs, so it's not really tied exactly to, well, you have X program, so it's X paras, it's not really tied to that. Um, but I, I understand what, what, what you're saying, so that's, I can't really speak to whether that really would change based on this, yeah.
And then, um, are we getting um revenue from Medicare, like, I know some, are we charging Medicare at all for some of the services?
Um, yep, so Medicaid is, is listed here.
Under the federal?
Yeah, it's under the federal, it's Medicaid, yep.
Okay.
Yep.
I know that's not a huge revenue, but I.
Yep, oh, it's, it's, it's decent, yep.
Yeah, right now, it's thirty-one thousand six.
That's decent.
Yeah, that is decent.
I just saw some checks go in my safe today, so it's gonna be a little more.
Yeah, so we're hoping there's more.
Um, so anyways, I, yeah, so I was saying, right now, we think we would need to use sixteen thousand, eight hundred and twenty-one of the special ed, of the special ed expendable trust. Again, that could change, but that's where we are at, and this was as of June seventeenth.
Ten days, almost ten days ago, okay. Great, any other questions, anything else to add?
Anything that you wanna, or anything else that you need to kinda know about, or highlight?
No, um, summer is very busy for us at the business office, so uh we um literally right now are in the middle of payroll one, which involves doing prior year pays for the end of FY twenty-five, paying new salaries for FY twenty-five, um. So we're working into separate connection groups, it's a lot going on, um, and then we'll be prepping for the audit, which will be happening, I believe it's the second week in August.
Okay, and then will you have like final numbers for this year, I think those came in August last time, right, do those come to the August meeting, or this September?
We probably will not, it'll probably September, maybe October, only because we're also getting a new BA, so it's, you got a lot going on.
It's a learning curve there, yep.
Yeah, yeah, no, absolutely, I just wanna, just wanna put it in my head, at some point, we'll be getting kinda the final numbers, and we'll be.
We could probably give you a better idea.
Yes.
Of like how much we.
After the auditors come, but it won't necessarily be final.
Okay, okay.
Great, great.
Alright, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Um.
Do we need a related?
I, whatever you feel less boring.
Donna, do you wanna go home?
Do you wanna go home?
Yeah.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Not a problem.
Thank you, Donna.
Alright, um, committee updates, so at this point, I'm gonna open the floor to board members here, if you have any updates, any committees you'd like to share, like to take this time to open up the floor, you can share them.
Uh, yeah, I mean, I can, I can meeting policy committee, I can update that, we've done some good, like, we've gone through and cleaned some things up, um, I know they just got the spring review that Gina, very optimistically asked if I had read, I'm not, right? And do not emphasize, but, but um, that's been, so I think we're gonna be continuing to look at that, but our next meeting is in August, so I feel like we're, we're just gonna kinda continue cleaning things up there, but it's been going along.
For, for everything building, um, I got to meet with Michelle Decoto and um Alan Rosenberg this week, um, Michelle is our town planner, and Alan is the co-chair of the planning board. Um, so they asked us to help with um our submission to, with capital improvement. Um, so I did ask Gina, but it sounds like she's out. Um, but the capital improvement plan is due on Friday, so I'm wondering, Lauren, if you might have access to that, if you could send that to me, um, as well as the facilities asset plan.
Okay.
Um, and I will work, I can work to get those done.
Okay.
Um, and if, if there's anyone else in the SAU that I should work with, with on that, you know, please just let me know.
Absolutely.
Um, so that was on the capital improvement side. And then, I had, I had a couple other kind of committee things that I was hoping to talk about, but I didn't know if you wanted to talk about any of your, like, actual assigned things.
I know we, I, I, I'm not, I know Allison, you're heading it up, and we have our dates for the teacher, uh, Brookline teacher negotiations, so that's outside, I don't know if you wanna add anything else there.
So all I was gonna say is that we've got, we've got like five or six meetings planned out, and we're ready to rock and roll, um, August, September, whenever.
I don't have an update, but can I, like, or will you be reaching out to us, to us for those?
Yes, as soon as we get the, um, the notification that they're ready to start, which will be typically August, then we'll reach out, and we'll get all of our meeting schedule.
And then for the co-op budget study, I haven't started that yet, I was wondering, like, if there are um staff or community members that I should be working with, like, just how to think about that over the summer.
Yeah, we can get some names for you, yep.
Yeah, because I think, I think Gina had somebody in mind.
Yeah, I think she does too, yeah.
To help with that, then between.
Yeah.
Tracy, the person we wanna hire, and Gina maybe, to kind of get that going.
Sure. Yeah, yeah, if we could, you know.
We owe you a bunch of information.
Yeah, yeah, no, if, I mean, then, that's great, then we can work on that in the summer, and then hopefully start right in September. Um.
So further, so co-op policy is not meeting at present, um, or no, SAU policy is not meeting at present, um, because I think we are waiting for the first uh evaluation to come in for Gina, that was what I think she mentioned to me, um, so I'll update you if that changes, um, and then I'm already about a third of the way into the teacher luncheon planning, so I've got that under control, and I'm chasing down a rock, in front of house.
Yes.
And you need to include me.
And I'm gonna email Heather, sorry, yes.
I, I did participate in the exit interview with our outgoing superintendent, um, I, I have, our committee met, we flushed out what we wanted to ask, we conducted the interview, we did debrief, um, but I really want to share those, um, what we found with Gina as well, and so I'm holding that until the next meeting, so we will do it non-public.
I was gonna say, you should be.
Yeah, yeah, we will do it non-public to all of those, so just know it was, it was done, it was, it was great, we got a lot of information, um, it will be shared with you, just wanna wait until um we have our full, our full group with us.
That'll be August, you're anticipating?
Oh, yeah, yeah, alright, um, anything else?
One, one other thing, I know Lynn isn't with us, unfortunately, she was, I think, had volunteered to look at some policy and advocacy um items, um, and kind of report back to the, to the group. Um, I'd just like to kind of ask some questions in terms of if that is going to be a routine and, and a standard committee, um, or a standard update um given by her or one of us, I'd, I'd like it for it to be a discussion, um.
I'm not sure, like, are you talking about like?
So we, I had proposed, or one of us had proposed a kind of advocacy or legislation um tracking committee, I forget what we had called it. Um, and in May, uh, we had talked about it, and Lynn said that she would volunteer to kind of keep track of some of the legislation that is coming down from the state, um, and how it might be affecting us in the district. Um, there's been a lot of movement, it seems like, especially around EFAs, open enrollment, those types of legislative pieces that really are going to affect our budget.
So I can, I can say that we did talk about open enrollment at the last policy meeting, and Dan, you can certainly jump in if you remember, I, I asked Gina about it, and she was of the understanding that that's not something right now that we, just because like there's a lot of questions, I think she said, is that what she said? That there were like a lot of questions, that it was kind of being quietly not implemented, or like, it's not something that we need to look at in terms of the open enrollment right now, but I can certainly make a note to follow up on the next policy maybe, cuz they did seem to have that.
Okay, so before we go down the rabbit hole of policies, to Tracy's question, I think, so I don't know how often you, you guys check your email, but the school board association is a really good job for putting out comms with line items, and I think that's what Lynn was going to eyeball, and, and if there was anything that was really red flaggy, to kind of raise it and just make sure we're all aware of it, and if we haven't seen it, be able to talk about it. Gina, I also spoke with Gina about doing something similar, um, because I know that she gets communications particularly from our lawyers, so that if there is something immediate or more immediate than some of these more, hey, what if possible things that are being um proposed, um, that we really talk about, that she'd be able to give updates on that as well. So, um, that's, does that answer kind of like what, in terms of like a standing conversation surrounding it?
Yeah, I mean, I, I think, I think it's, I think it would be helpful to have it be standing, um, just because it feels like there are so many things happening, I think there, gosh, I don't even know how many pieces of legislation that have been proposed, um, and again, I, I think it's really going to affect our, our budget um, and our, and our budget planning, um, and so, you know, I just wanna make sure that as a board, we have the space and time to talk about this legislation, I.
So I was just saying, I mean, a lot of legislation that is coming out, how we do talk about in policy, like, it comes up in policy, it's brought up in policy, it's, it's something that is on, and, and like, um, there was one piece of legislation that we have discussed in non-public that ended up getting tabled.
Yep.
So we did, we did update that, so, I mean, a lot of that is already happening, I'm certainly more than happy to, to be more, like, to share, like, what we're talking about, but I, I do think some of those conversations are already happening.
Sure, and then that would be great, because I'm not on policy.
I could, I could certainly.
But how, I, I don't know if maybe, we're, though, there's maybe two different things here, though, hear me out, right? So from what I hear, what you're saying, is kind of something that, I think we also talked about the fact that, like, how, how are we making sure that our schools are be, being represented with our values, like, we were voted to the school board, right, and like, making sure that that is the, how it's being voted on at the state level? I think what you're saying is, okay, now it's, when it's a policy, right, so it's already been voted on, now at the policy level, you're, it sounds like, and I, you're just saying you'll keep us informed. But it sounds like you're saying, like, before it even gets there, like, how are we making sure that we're advocating? Cuz like, I know that a couple of us have gotten some communications, right, and it's others, other SAUs reaching out, and I know that none of us have responded or anything like that, cuz we respond to the board, I think it's more of, like, are we just making sure that we're advocating for the, our values within Brookline, you know, to make sure that they're following up with what our, like, our voters, or like, our discussions at town meeting at the state level also?
Is that what you're asking, Jason?
Yeah, I, I think it's, yeah, I think it's both, I mean, I think it's great to know that we can hear how legislation that has passed will be affecting us and our policy. legislation that has passed will be affecting us and our policies, which is great. I think we've, we've gotten that. Um, but, yeah, I, I would like to, to have the space and to dive deeper and to see if we can, um, you know, discuss it as a board in terms of advocating for what we think as a school board is best for running this, like, ma- having a well-manag- having a well-run or well-mannered, however you wanna say it, fully funded school. Um.
So, I will say that as school boards, we're governing boards, we're not advocacy boards. Um, and.
Right, and we're not, but the New Hampshire School Board Association does, does let us do that.
So, to a degree, and, um, I know I personally am not comfortable with us advocating as a, wholly as a board. I would like to see us do it as individual members, if we are individual community members, if that is something we wanna do.
Yeah.
Um, I, I did reach out. I, I believe and I feel that this is a little bit outside our scope of what we were elected to do, so because our role as school board, we are, what we're elected to do in terms of governance, when the meeting starts, we engage in our role. When the meeting ends, we are, we pause, right?
Yeah.
Um, so, working outside of that capacity, um, is not something that I am necessarily comfortable with. Um, I also know, like, to the point of we had spoken about a potential legislation, it, it was a good twenty, thirty minute conversation. If we did that for everything that came down, our meetings are going to be incredibly way too long. So, um, I, on the New Hampshire School Board legislation thing that, that comes out, it does say, like, please, please reach out, please let your voices be heard. Um, and, and I, and I asked for some clarity on that because I, I, I know there are some of us that, that want to actively be
Well, then I think it should come to a vote.
Advocate as a, as a board, well, no.
Well, no, well.
Yes, it, it should be, I, I should make a motion, that.
If I know.
So, huh, hey, Tracy.
No, no, Allison, you don't get to make a unilateral decision.
If I'm. Wait, if I may just jump in for a second, so this maybe, so because this is sort of a gray area, um, maybe we do have the attorney coming in August.
Yeah.
And it may be a good time to have this discussion to ask.
So why is the school board, well, so why is the school board not, not able to do this, but the select board, the library trustees, and the conservation committee in town?
Whether, whether we can act as a board.
So I, so I will say, from, from this, from my point of view, as, as a person who sits on this board, but also as somebody who has somebody sitting on the library boards, the library board doesn't tend to, from, from what I have been.
It's the, it's the library friends or the library trustees.
Okay, but that's, but that's not the library board.
Okay, so I misspoke, so I, I apologize.
So, I think, so one, I think this is also a conversation we need to have with the full board, but two, I think
Yep.
one of the biggest things that we hear at deliberative, and one of the biggest votes of feedback that we get is, you guys need to be nonpartisan, you guys need to be nonpartisan.
And it's not partisan.
But it is, but I think.
No, it is not, no, it is not. It is not, it is for the benefit of our schools, it is for the benefit of our town.
I, it is. So.
We have legislators from this town that are actively supporting legislation that takes money away from us. This has, this directly ties to policy and it directly ties to our role in budget.
So, okay.
Go, go ahead.
No, no, I was just gonna say, I mean, I, I really, I don't think we're going to have an answer tonight, and we also have a member of the board missing, and this is a very, a very important topic. Uh, you know, and I do think it would be probably in the best interest to speak with the School Board Association just to clarify.
So what they have on their website, we shouldn't take out?
They're coming in August because there's some gray areas about our roles and responsibilities, and I'd like clarity from them and not interpreting what is written. Because, yes, I, I, I've seen what's there, right, and, and when, and when I reached out, um, I got a response back from, directly from Becky Wilson, um, and she said that, um, we could send communications to our abstract senators from all board members in one email or communication if we are all signed on, if we are all signed on.
Right, and that's why we should have a, we should have a motion.
But I'm telling you right now, I'm not gonna sign on to that, so that's not all, so we, we're not gonna do that.
That's why, but. We're a majority, we don't have to.
No, 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 all, this says all, this doesn't say majority, this is all.
I, I think that has the entire.
So.
And, and further, she says, however, in the situation, if there's a desire for a board member to speak from an individual level about the impacts on you or your district as a resident or a certain town district, we would suggest that you identify that you're speaking on your own behalf, not as behalf, as, not on behalf of the board as a whole.
So you're not comfortable with us writing a letter saying we, okay.
So.
I'm not comfortable with that.
And, and, and I'm not trying to be argumentative, but this says all, it's not a majority thing, I don't want somebody else speaking on my behalf. I think it would be, personally, my viewpoint is, that as I send communications out, supporting or not supporting things that are going on at legislative, legislative level, if all five of us did it individually, five comms versus one with five names on it is more, oftentimes is more impactful anyways.
It, it looks mu- it looks so much better, it would look so much better. I don't agree with it being impactful.
So, and I disagree, and I disagree with that.
That's fine, but we should be having this conversation, Allison, and you didn't put it on the agenda.
And I, and I reached back out to you and told you why, I'm not going, Tracy, I'm not going there.
And I don't have availability, no, and, and I, as.
So, you couldn't, no, I, I need to put an end to this.
No, you don't, you are not allowed to rule unilaterally.
Yes.
So, so, right, so right now, so I, I'm just gonna, as, as we look at the agenda, and, and I'm not saying we have to stop the conversation, but I just wanna kind of bring us back to the agenda. So this, this was committee updates, that's what's on the agenda, and I know there's discussion about what's on the agenda.
Yeah.
But as the, it's a committee up, update piece, I do think that hearing your request for either a new committee or looking at, that can definitely be on the table and we can look at that and pursue that. Um, and I do think it would be beneficial for the entire board, all five members, to hear and to read more on the website, but to hear from the attorney as well, just to have all the information so everyone can vote accordingly. Um, it just may be best, knowing everyone has a different lens on how to interpret it.
And, and. I don't think we really have anything, I'm with you and understand where you're coming from.
Yeah.
I don't really think we have anything just yet to actually vote on, though, like, I think we need to get to a place where, like, we have a conversation, because we can't, I, I would agree that we can't have a conversation about each and every legislation piece, but I think that what we wanna be ready to do is if there is something that comes down that we feel deep, deeply impacts
Yeah, maybe you could, right.
us as a, as a town, and, and is very opposite of the fate, in going in the face of what our town's values are, or where our budget is at, then I think we need to be a little bit more specific, is what I'm saying. So like, if we came and said there's specific legislations that we feel it's gonna be detrimental, then I think then, as a board, we can have a conversation to say why we feel strongly about that, and if, as a board, we want to then make a change. I don't think we have that just yet. Is that fair?
I just, I think we also need to be very mindful of the fact that, like, yes, our job is to run this school and our job is to advocate this best for the students, and.
No, we're not, our job is not to run the school, our job is to govern, and make sure the schools are being run by the people we put in place.
Okay, our job is not to, yes, to. Okay.
But we also.
So, okay, okay, so let me finish, let me finish. So what I would say, what I was gonna say, I misspoke, what I was going to say, though, is I think at the end of the day, too, though, how we do that is we build trust with our community. So I personally would also like some more community feedback on this, because they, we build trust with our community by not being partisan, and regardless of where it is falling, if the community feels that we're being partisan, I feel like that actually breaks trust, and that makes it hard for us to get the funding and get, so, so I, I think that's something that needs to be considered also. That's where my head is, is that it's like, I hear what you're saying. I personally don't think that's my job as a board member. I'm more than happy to fire him off as a, as a taxpayer, and I do. But I think at the end of the day, I think we also need to be mindful of, like, but, but how we, how we keep our schools running the way they are, and how we fund them, and how we fulfill their potential, is we have trust with our community to support us to do that, and if our community sees that we're trying, if they feel, their perception is that we're trying to tip too much into politics, I feel like it's gonna be detrimental to us as a board, so I wanna be mindful of that, too.
Sure. Sure. I, I guess what, maybe it's a bad example, but I'm gonna try, try to use it, right? Like, we, as a town, like, the school board, I was there, presented, um, the tax cap, right? I'm not gonna have the exact rate, 'cause I wasn't even on the thing. We presented the tax cap and we had chosen, as, as a town, the town voted against it, right? And so that's where, and that, that will impact our school, right? So I think maybe we just need to have a conversation to better understand what the role is, talk to our lawyer, but understand, like, where, I do also believe that our community has put us in this position to help educate them, right? So if there is something that they voted on, but now something different's happening, we have to be able to explain that, too, because, like, why are we a school board? Um, again, why wouldn't we be, like, advocating for, you know what I'm saying?
So advocacy and information sharing are two, so hang on, advocacy and information sharing are two different things we need to talk about.
I mean, the advocating is. Sure, absolutely.
I don't disagree that informing our community on things that are coming down, like, what started this conversation of having some kind of legislative update as to what's going on, is a bad thing. I think that's a good thing. What I don't agree with is the second part of this, which is advocating as a whole school board, because I, I just don't agree with it, much to the reasons that Johanna much more eloquently shared than I was ever gonna be able to about it being a nonpartisan mission. Because so much of what's going on in the legislation now is very partisan-driven, and it was going to give the impression or illusion that we are leaning one way or the other. It's not that we don't want what's best, it's not that we are not working to, so, so to me, there's two different things here, and one is a legislative update, which I've spoken to Gina, she does, and she's going to continue to do, especially with the immediate things that are coming down, and then with Lynn looking if there's anything major red flag. But my concern is we're gonna go down rabbit holes where these meetings are gonna get incredibly long, because we're talking about, hey, what if this could potentially, like, the, like, the school, um, open enrollment, or whatever that one is called, because that came up in another meeting I was in, like, it's a lot of that, unfortunately, right now is what if, because a lot of these get presented and die in committee, some don't, which then tracking them and having those conversations is important. But the second part, Tracy, I'm not trying to rule unilaterally. However, there is a gray areas to our roles and responsibilities. You had asked, and I tried to get somebody in for June, I couldn't find a date where we were all here, so it's not gonna be until August, so I any kind of vo- board vote on writing letters, like, I'm not, I'm not in agreement with that this evening, and.
I, I think we need more healthy conversation. I think if I do ask for something to be put on the agenda, I am entitled to having that put on the agenda. This is the second time that I've asked for something and it hasn't been put on the agenda. Board members, if it's, I wanna talk about Smurfs, and I ask for it to be put on the agenda, per our policy, it's supposed to go on the agenda. And I think these conversations need to happen and need to happen in a healthy and respectful way, because at the end of the day, we each have one vote.
But I think if we're gonna write letters that sign.
No, I'm not, but I'm not even talking about, I'm not talking about that right now, I'm not going, we're not gonna go back, we're gonna go forward.
So, so, we didn't put this one on the agenda, and I explained to you why, and that is within my purview of chair.
No, it is not.
It is.
No, according to policy, B D, B E D. B E D B.
I'm, I'm not sure this is gonna be a.
This, this isn't going to be a healthy conversation.
Uh, yeah.
Right, because I have a right to have a voice and to have these sort of conversations.
I don't think that any of us want to silence that voice. We want to have this be a place where we can have discussions. There's also, I think we have to be mindful of, like, but what is the time and the place, and I'm at the chair, so I can't, I can't say why, but if, I doubt that Allison would have acted without reaching out to other people and asking this or something, and I feel like she would have.
I did, I, I.
But that is, again, acting unilaterally. We should be having these conversations about these things in public.
Please don't yell.
I'm not yelling.
You are, you.
I'm not yelling.
You're coming, you're, my perception is you're starting to.
And, and I'm passionate about these things, and I feel like my voice has been silenced, and I feel like I, I tried to bring up issues or, or comments, or have things put on the agenda, and, and they're not, and I think we all have points of view that we should be able to discuss here.
I, I, I agree with that, but I do think we need more guidance. I think we need to have the full board when we have these discussions. I think we all need to agree that all of us are on this board for a reason. All of us are very passionate about the schools, or we're gonna be here. Like, this isn't, like, you know, this isn't a job that, like, is easy to do, so I think, I think if we can all operate in that sense, I, I'm not gonna pretend to know, like, what the rules are and what it, but I think, I think we just need to also stay focused that we're a team, and so this is not a conversation that's leading to that. I do wanna circle back to what you were saying, Heather, though, in terms of education, that is something we can and have done. The tax cap is actually a great example, because we had the lawyer who did a presentation on the tax cap, why was that, like, what, so we, we absolutely were able to educate the cup, like, about why we thought
Right.
the town voted not to, and that's fine, but, but I don't want you to feel like that's not something we can do, because from my perspective and my experience, we were able to do that last year, and, and there was no problem.
Sure. I.
We just like to make sure that it's, I, I just also just personally feel with my, my anxiety kicking in, I personally like to feel that, like, we're doing things that are above board, so having the lawyers with, having their counsel is, is important, if this is to be, so that we can't say, yes, we checked every box, we crossed every T, we're, we're here to offer both sides of the coin objectively, that's, I just wanna.
You tonight don't wanna talk about this this evening, because we don't have the proper people in place.
Right, I think we such a piss out of us, if we are talking about it.
And.
I, I mean.
I know, so Tracy, so we hear you, and I, you know, I hear you about the agenda, topic concerns and all those pieces, and, you know, um, we'll loop Gina into that as well for a conversation, but again, and I, I'd hate to, I'm so sorry I keep bringing up August, but I think the August meeting with the School Board Association facilitating a conversation, and if we had a list of all these concerns and had, you know, were able to kind of hit on all those, I think that will hopefully kind of draw the group kind of closer together to understand, um, all, all the, including your topic of, you know, about the agenda, as well as all the other kind of broader topics for what the school board can do in the broader sense with legislation.
Wonderful.
I just, I, I know, I'm, I'm sorry that it's two, it's two months away, I just, um, I think that would be a better avenue to answer the questions.
Does anyone want a cupcake? I'm getting a cupcake.
Go get a cupcake.
Look, my pen even says, I have anxiety pens.
Anything else for committees before we move on? All right, moving to deliberations.
Do we have to have a non-public?
Do we have enough?
We don't have one on our end.
You don't have one?
We don't.
We do not have one. All right. So deliberations, this is to see what action the board will take regarding the resolution to authorize one million, one hundred and thirty-five thousand, seven hundred.
Wait, thirty-one.
One million, one hundred and thirty-one thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars of lease purchase finance of energy conservation equipment and related building improvements at district facilities. I need to read the following resolution, um, into the record. Am I good to go?
Yes.
All right, I apologize in advance. The School Board of the Brookline School District, the district, hereby resolves as follows.
I'm so, so sorry, you have to read the bold as well.
Just kidding, let me back all the way up.
I'm sorry.
Resolution to authorize one million, one hundred and thirty-one thousand, seven hundred and fifty of lease purchase financing of energy conservation equipment and related building improvements at district facilities. The School Board of the Brookline School District, the district, hereby resolves as follows. One, that pursuant to RSA thirty-three colon seven dash E and all other applicable law, laws, and voter approval of Article Two of the twenty-twenty-five Brookline School District warrant for the annual meeting held February fifth, twenty-twenty-five, and March eleventh, twenty-twenty-five, the authorizations, in quotes, the superintendent of schools, the superintendent, is authorized to enter into an agreement with TD Equipment Finance Incorporated or one of its business units for the acquisition and installation of energy confer- conservation equipment, being CSDA boilers and LED lighting and controls, and related building improvements at Captain Samuel Douglas Academy and Richard Mahakian Memorial School. The equipment in the principal amount of one million, one hundred and thirty-one thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars, and any such prior action is ratified and confirmed. Two, that the superintendent and business administrator, acting singly, acting singly?
Mm-hmm.
Are authorized to execute and deliver an acceptance of a proposal by TD Equipment Finance Incorporated to provide tax, tax-exempt lease purchase financing, the non-appropriation clause, in the principal amount of one million, one hundred and thirty-one thousand, seven hundred and fifty. The bank proposal, which was accepted, shall be on such terms, including amendments thereto, and in such form as the superintendent or business administrator may approve. Said approval to be conclusively evidenced by the execution and delivery thereof. And any such prior action by the superintendent or business administrator is hereby ratified and confirmed. Three, that pursuant to the authorizations, the superintendent and the business administrator, acting singly, in the name, in the name and on behalf of the district, the lessee, are authorized to execute and deliver a tax-exempt lease purchase agreement with non-appropriation clause with TD Equipment Finance Incorporated, to provide lease purchase financing in a principal amount not to exceed one million, one hundred and thirty-one thousand, seven hundred and fifty to fund the equipment. to fund the equipment, on such terms and in such form as the superintendent or business administrator may approve. Such approval to be conclusively evidenced by the execution and delivery thereof, and which, and which terms shall be substantially on the terms at fourth in the bank proposal as accepted the lessee. Four, that to the extent not inconsistent with this resolution and the bank proposal as accepted, the superintendent and business administrator acting singly are authorized to select such dates, maturities, denominations, interest rate, rates, place, places of payment, form, forms, and other details of the lessee as the superintendent or business administrator may approve, said approval to be conclusively evidenced by the execution and delivery thereof. Five, that the superintendent and business administrator acting singly are authorized to covenant on behalf of the lessee that neither the proceeds of the lessee, of the lease, nor the equipment shall be used in any manner that would cause the lease to be an arbitrage bond or privately, or private activity bond with the meaning of sections one forty-eight and one forty-one of the Internal Revenue Code of nineteen eighty-six as amended the code. Six, that the superintendent and business administrator acting singly are authorized to covenant on behalf of the lessee to file any information, any information report and pay any rebate due to the United States in connection with the issuance of the lease. Seven, that the superintendent and business administrator acting singly are authorized to execute and deliver such tax certificates, arbitrage, and use pros- and use, and use of proceeds, certifications, and other documents and certificates as may, in the superintendent or business administrator's opinion, be necessary or convenient to effect the transaction herein authorized. To be in such form, not inconsistent with the, this resolution, as the superintendent or business administrator may approve, said approval to be conclusively evidenced by the execution and delivery thereof. Eight, that the superintendent and business administrator acting singly are authorized to designate the lease as a qualified tax-exempt obligation with the meaning of section two hundred and sixty-five, five B three of the code. Nine, that the superintendent and business administrator acting singly are authorized to, to covenant, certify, and agree on behalf of the lessee for the benefit of the lessor, and that the lessee will file any required reports, make any annual financial or material event disclosures, and take other action that may be necessary to ensure the disclosure requirements imposed by Rule fifteen C two dash twelve of the Securities and Exchange Commission, to the extent applicable are met. Ten, that the superintendent and other appropriate officials of the lessee, acting singly, are authorized to execute and deliver on behalf of the lessee such security agreements, UCC dash one, financing statements, fixture fillings, and other documents and certificates as may be required in connection with the lease. Eleven, the superintendent and other proper officials of the lessee, acting singly, are authorized and empowered in its name and on its behalf to do or cause to do all such other acts and things as may be necessary or desirable in order to affect the execution and delivery of the lease in accordance here within, here with. Twelve, that if the superintendent or any other officer or official of the lessee is for any reason unavailable to, as applicable, approve, execute, or attest the lease or any related financing documents, the person or persons acting in any such capacity, whether as an assistant, a deputy, or otherwise, is authorized to act for said official with the same force and effect as if the official had herself, himself, performed such act, and thirteen, that an attested copy of this resolution be included with the minutes of this meeting.
Is that it?
So, I'll make a resolution entitled Resolution to authorize one million, one hundred and thirty-one thousand, seven hundred and fifty of lease purchase financing of energy conservation equipment and related building improvements at district fa- facilities be approved in form presented to this meeting, and that an attested copy of said resolution be included with the minutes of this meeting.
Yes.
You can second, you can second, all in favor?
Um, I hope you wanted to close public input.
Oh, yes, and now I will close public input at seven fifty-six. Thank you. Alright. Um, this is deliberations, right?
Yes.
Do we need to talk about that?
Uh, if, if there's any questions, you could
Any questions about all the legalese that I just got to make? Okay, um, so the next one is to see what action the board will take regarding the Maintenance Expendable Trust Fund, retained fund balance, and the Special Education Expendable Trust Fund. Um, as a reminder, hard inquiries are being developed. If the total of the quotes comes in above three hundred thousand, adjustments will be made to get the cost down to three hundred thousand. Um, and the expenses have been prioritized as previously discussed.
And these will be three separate motions, so the first one, we just need a motion for the
So, this is just a motion to accept it?
Um, to, to authorize the expenditure of the, uh, three hundred thousand dollars.
I'll make a motion, to authorize the expenditure of an amount not to exceed three hundred thousand dollars from the Brookline Maintenance Expendable Trust Fund for the purchase of the maintenance items identified during the public hearing.
I second.
Thank you, all in favor? Retained fund balance, um, the recommendation of the business administrator is that the school board will vote to utilize the FY twenty-five retained fund balance, one hundred and forty thousand dollars was retained, to address what would otherwise be a negative fund balance at the year-end due to special education costs that exceeded budgeted amounts.
I'll second.
Why didn't make a motion?
Okay, I'll
I was waiting for anybody
Can, I'll, I'll make a motion as moved, no, I have to say as moved.
No, you need actually to read the
So, um, I will make a motion to utilize the FY twenty-five retained fund balance of one hundred and forty thousand dollars to address a budget shortfall due to special education costs that exceeded the budgeted amounts.
Second. Excellent, all in favor? That's it, right?
Look, uh, special ed trust.
Did I miss that one? I did.
Okay, Special Education Expendable Trust Fund. At this point in FY twenty-five, we are not anticipating the use of any special education trust funds for FY twenty-six. However, we're, we are requesting to use up to sixty thousand dollars in FY twenty-five due to year-end balance projected to be a negative balance. The request from the public hearing on the retained fund balance is to use the full hundred and forty thousand dollars first, and then utilize the Special Education Expendable Trust only if necessary, and only up to sixty thousand dollars. Let me just go, let me make that
I can, hold on, I can do it.
Alright, Heather closes your
I'm trying to find it.
It's on page seven.
Of the outline.
Just pass it over.
And then pass it back, so I know what I'm doing.
Okay, so the recommendation is to, I'm sorry.
Halfway down, you're gonna read the bold motion to authorize the use of an amount.
To authorize the use of an amount not to exceed sixty thousand dollars from the Brookline Special Education Trust in uh, FY twenty-five, if required, to end the fiscal year at a zero balance.
Alright, all in favor? Heather, thank you, thank you. Alright. Now, um, to see what action the board will take regarding the proposed policy memo. Johanna, you walk us through the policy memo, or, um, Lauren, are you?
Lauren.
Either.
Lauren will tell you the policies, and I will tell you what
Okay. Do you want me to start?
Yes.
And so, okay, so we're looking at the policy memo, we have some, um, for our first and adopt, with this J I C I, uh, weapons on school property, you wanna start with that one?
Yes.
Okay.
So, uh, basically, we were discussing this to kind of be, uh, be coming to line, and Lauren has certainly corrected my memo coming to line with other um, districts, to make sure that we just had a very clear policy and outline of, like, what is another weapon, what the consequences are concerning weapons in school, um, specifically as there was no specific incident at home to this, it was really just more they bring it, and I, and Dan can also
Yep, it's based on RSA, so, oh, I'm sorry, Dan, I'm sorry.
No, no, I was just gonna say, it's also required to be in our student parent handbook, so it's not.
Yep. Yep, so this is required by, by RSA, which is why we're asking for the first and adopt, because it needs to be included in a handbook, which is edited over the summer, um, in time for registration by parents at the rollover.
And we, we did discuss as a policy that if we would like to review this policy, come back, to kind of come back, and we're happy to look at it again, put it on the agenda again. Um, but in, in the interest of getting the student handbook out on time with this policy, we wanted to have it
I think as of right now, we're gonna have the handbook just say currently in review.
Okay.
But if we, if we, if we can get it done in time, we'll try to update it.
And, I'm sorry, are the policies in here somewhere?
They should be under the, there should be
Yeah, they're in, they are in the packet, under, under letter, uh, F two.
Or if you're on the agenda page, you can click on it, on the policy.
Like where it says recommendations?
So Under number two, under deliberations?
Under deliberations.
I think you have to go back to the agenda, I think that's about meeting out there.
It's J I C I.
Just find it.
But, um, John, we did, we did make some edits to it.
Yes, we did. Um, so my internet is not cooperating with
Do you want me to share which ones they were?
Thank you.
Lauren, do you want me to share it?
Yeah, please.
Okay, so for the weapons on school property, uh, we pretty much left the first, um, paragraph as is, but we did cross out the second paragraph and the third paragraph. I'm not gonna read it fully unless you'd like me to, but, um
This was language, I believe, we took from the sample.
From the sample policy.
We, we did take this language specifically from the samples, so, um, just, just again, trying to kinda come in line with RSA language, come in line with the other districts, to make sure that we're all on the same page. Hoping we don't have to use it.
Wait, do we not already have, like, a weapons policy?
We did, and we just changed it.
It's an update based on, based on RSA.
That's what the cross-out is?
Correct, yep.
So, um, Heather, if you actually throw all the way down, you can generally, there's a history, um, I didn't know this until, like, two minutes ago. Um, there's a history, so like, the first reading of the last policy was in twenty eighteen, so we're just updating it. Just to drive Okay, um, so the next policy
So, can I just ask a question? If everybody's good with this, with the cross-outs? I can edit and throw it in the handbook, you guys do that?
Yes, I think, I mean, I think if there are any other major concerns
I just, I was just wondering, it says, members of the public who violate this policy may be reported to local law enforcement. Is there any reason why we wouldn't? I mean, I don't think the public is allowed to bring
So, the example that we have was Voting Day, right, so Voting Day, um, I believe we talked about that, they are allowed to So they are allowed to carry on to school property at that, for that event? Um, I don't know if that applies to, like, meetings, does that apply to, like, town meeting or things like that?
I'm not a hundred percent sure it applies to town meetings, um, but you wouldn't have it at a sporting event. Like, you wouldn't have a parent come in at a basketball game, you know, those would be the ones that we would be reporting.
So, like, I, I believe it's more like school, a school function, so like, a basketball game, like, a school, whereas voting, I believe, that's why we chose
Or use the building, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, that's why we chose to close the school that day, so that we could minimize the risk, 'cause I don't think we were. That was the example that
Ready for the next one?
Well, we don't vote on this because the policy committee is responsible for that, or do we need to vote on it?
We're, you're gonna vote on the, on the entire memo, so we're gonna discuss every policy, make sure everyone kind of, you know, has their, has the input, we'll take notes to, that, for the ones that go back to the policy committee, they'll take those notes and they'll make changes, um, but you're gonna vote on the whole memo at the end.
So if you have questions or you have concerns, you want something edited as we go?
Yes.
That, we talk about it, they'll make the notes, and then when we vote on the memo, that will include the, the notes, so if it was a, if it was a read and adopt, we want some change, it would no longer be
Right, right, we're gonna go back.
Yeah, so you can feel free, like, even if it's, like, first reading and adopt, like, we don't have to adopt it, you can decide if I get it.
Right, like, if you need us to read through or something, like, that's
Yeah, we don't normally do a first read and, and, and adopt, it's only for these ones where the RSA is driving it, and we need it included for public dissemination, such as the handbook, that's, those are the times that we would request that, but we very rarely request that.
Thank you.
Next one, K I, visitors to school.
So this one, um, we just kind of, we had this, I believe, came to the last meeting, I believe this is, this is this third and adopt or second?
So we're actually not gonna be adopting it, and, uh, none of the other ones are gonna be up for adoption tonight, so if anyone has any input, we could
This is our third reading, and we made some changes to this one, um, because we specifically wanted to be clear about, um, if, like, an outside provider or tester was coming in to observe the student, what that meant. So you'll see, um, visitors for the purpose of observation by outside providers, we added that in to be very clear that, like, you're coming in to observe a specific child for a specific reason, the principal is aware. Um, I know in the past we have had some parents be like, I just want to come observe a child in the classroom, and, and we're, and we wanna be very clear that that's not like, what that policy is for. Um, you know, we didn't, so we crossed out, um, you know, just like signing in at the main office, and, um, visitors not being asked, because we, we kind of included that in, they need to be making a request to the building principal or designee, they will determine, like, the principal will kind of order them to determine where these, so all of that's kind of brought up into that. Um, all observers need to sign in, the confidentiality requirement, so we just kind of cleaned that language up. We did also add at the request of the principals, a very specific, uh, we've had some issues with, um, siblings coming to school, so like, um, if visitors or people are coming in and they're bringing siblings who can't then go into the classroom, or are being disruptive in the classroom, and certainly, principals can speak more to this. Um, so we kind of did add some of that, that, like, visitors need to be, obviously, FAU, like, volunteer, like, visitor and volunteer are different, so we kind of made that clear. Um, but just really added, like, are not permitted to bring any family members when busy, unless it's been specifically authorized by the principal, because we're really just trying to, um, be aware that, like, we're going into live classrooms. And so here was a visitor going in, and you have a three-year-old with you, the three-year-old is directing the back of the classroom, that can disrupt the educational process, and as much as we love all of the children, sometimes it's not the best idea to bring them. Or like, um, if there was an example given for, like, field day, someone had an infant strapped to their chest for field day, and they were golf balls, why, we just opted not to do that, so. Any, anything that you guys wanna add to that?
Nope. You covered it, yeah?
Policy, I mean, that one's not under adoption, but certainly, any feedback, please let us know.
Yeah, are there any questions or anything that you'd want changed or altered? Okay.
Um, so health education, we're just kind of continuing to try and clean it up, um, so that's IHAM, or I H A M. Um, we're just trying to be very clear about what it is that we're actually covering, because this can be a topic that obviously can be tricky for some parents, you know, what does health education and kind of that mean? So the policy we had in place talked about reproduction, sexuality, education, HIV, acquired AIDS. Those are not topics that we are covering in the Brookline District, those are topics that would be more in the co-op districts, that really need to be spelled out there. Here, we're talking about parts of the body, puberty, related topics about that. So we really wanted to just be specific, um, thinking about it from the role of a parent, like, if you're looking at that, you I don't wanna have to sift through all that, 'cause some of that might cause questions or flags in my brain, whereas it, if they're not gonna learn about that, then that's a conversation that doesn't need to happen here, and would be more appropriate to happen later, so, so we're just, I think that's the only change that we made, is just continuing to try and clean that up, but this is, any, I, I definitely wanna hear back from you guys on this one, because in terms of just, like, parents, and like, what, parents need to know, what do you guys think about? Do you think we need to be more specific? Do you feel like that's, that's enough to kind of take out, do you want us to add anything?
I was gonna say, if we're not talking about these things, then I agree, it's why are we opening a can of worms for no reason?
So it was kind of our fault. Yeah, 'cause a parent could come in all, all like, I don't want my kid learning about sexuality, but we're not, we're not talking about that, right?
But maybe they think, but maybe they think they are, because
Because it's
Because it's in there, like, we're just like, please, show her. Okay, so that's IHAM.
Any other questions? Yeah, I like what you guys did about that one.
Yes, so admission, um, of tuition and non-resident students, so this is something that we wanted to draw, actually, through that, to your thoughts on teacher recognition, kind of how we can continue to build on that.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I'm not a hundred percent sure, this was a very long one and very complicated, so anyone else can definitely jump into that. Um, but, but the gist of it was, was that tuition for non-resident students, particularly staff that work in our district, who don't live in district, being able to bring their children here, they pay, um, they pay a percentage towards the cost of that. So I believe in Brookline, the percentage was seventy-five percent, but in the co-op, it was fifty percent, Hollis is twenty-five percent, Hollis will have, so, that they would pay. So we opted to lower our contribution to fifty percent, because we were getting feedback that staff in the Brookline District were, um, putting their children in the Hollis District schools, because there, it was seventy-five percent of a big cost, so we, in order to kind of, um, you know, change that, we really wanted to be more on board with that fifty percent. Um, but the co-op uses to, to encourage them to, like, yeah, absolutely, if there's room and there's space, and this will make life easier, please, please apply, like, we can look at it. Um, my understanding is that these come to the board, is that correct?
Correct, in, in a non-public, yep.
Yeah, so we would make sure that there was room, we would make sure we were over in caps, um, if there were special education, I always said that's, that goes to the district provider, like, the home district would be the one dealing with that.
That's more, it's more complicated than that, but, but
But that's what it's explained to
Yeah, yeah, it's more
In the, in the absence of Lauren, that's her
Yes.
Um, but either way, you know, 'cause that was a question that I had, is like, do we, do we wanna, you know, make sure that our resources are being appropriately allocated for our students in the district? So, um, but we were hoping that this would be something that would encourage to retention
So I saw that, and I appreciate you, you lowered that, I'm just wondering why we didn't go didn't go down to twenty-five like Hollis?
Um, because I, I won't speak for Hollis, but the thought, process of the SAU is that that is too low and they are thinking about working with Hollis to see if it will come up to fifty, so that way it would be a uniform.
So, and if you look at the actual cost of adding a student to a classroom, okay, so like, you know, you have a class of sixteen, you're adding another one at seventeen, that fifty percent number is more representative than seventy-five percent of what that cost would really look like, you know, so we wanna make sure that we're being, you know, fair and as we're looking at needs.
Yeah, and I believe the example given was that the co-op had really done a lot of looking into and factoring out that budgeted, so that fifty percent was a much better number in terms of what we would actually need, the twenty-five percent was quite low.
You know me, I would just tell them to come for free.
Yeah, right. I'm gonna make those decisions, that was our goal, is I do, we certainly wanna provide that, that opportunity for our staff and our benefit if they work here, um, we're happy to have them here if there's room, but yeah, we wanna.
And the board would, would approve every request comes by, so.
So it's not just a blanket?
Correct.
Oh, I can bring.
Correct.
Yes, and, um, I, I did ask specifically about would, would we be concerned about there being an influx or like an overflow, um, I was told that was not a concern at this time, so, yeah, absolutely, like all of all that.
And it's also approved year after year?
Yes.
So it's not once you've come?
Correct, because then if there's a bubble or if there's some kids, ton of kids move in, you know, right, so it, it is reviewed every.
I'll give you a presentation, so, in like the last ten years I've been here, there's maybe been two requests to consider, like even to consider, but it was too much.
Yes, so, um, so that's, that's something that, yeah, we really wanted to put in, um, unfortunately, if they have preschool children, you still have to go on the waitlist, so good luck getting off that, because that's a, that's a whole vibe, that list.
That list is a vibe, but that list moves.
It does, yeah, I, I don't know.
I was like thirty-nine and then I got a call, but I'd already.
It moves, cuz a lot of people kind of taken, uh, they need a full day, so.
Yes, I, uh, I got to skip.
Um, going back to that one, though, the, cuz you know I'm always looking for ways, if they have to reapply every year, even if there were a bubble, if you're saying that you've had two over the time you've been here, why can't we just say if they work here, they don't have to reapply if you're year over.
I'm, I'm not sure that this specifies that it does or doesn't, I think that we look at it as like a review process, so we look at it that we're reviewing the grades and the numbers and the cohorts and those pieces, but I will dig into that a little bit more.
Because I'd like to, if I was a teacher and I want to take part of that benefit, I would be concerned that my child gets integrated into a grade, first grade or second grade or fourth grade and then, and they build those relationships and then the next year, I'm still there, but my kid isn't able to? I think that is a disservice to our teachers, so I would actually like to see that, once we approve that child to come into our district, if they are, would be allowed to stay as long as their parent is employed by our district.
I, I agree with that, I think the one thing that I would just put out there as a caution is like at the same time, we can't, we don't, we would like to talk about that, but we have to be careful, cuz I, I, my question was, well, what if we have too many residents in town who are moving in who need the school, like, I don't, do you know what I mean?
But again, back to the.
No, I know, but I'm just saying, I, I just think that in, if you're putting it in a policy, though, like, you don't, listen, did you know, did you see my teacher lunch in Washington, I'm all about the teachers, love them, but I.
Sometimes you see in writing.
Yeah, I just, I don't, but I also don't wanna handicap us to the point where we.
Understood. This isn't in their contracts, obviously.
But that can, that can come back to policy, to the policy committee, you can discuss it further.
It's a policy. FYI is a policy that we have, obviously could change.
Correct.
Is this, is this in the contracts or is it just?
No.
No, it's just a policy.
So any other thoughts, questions about that one? Um, this would apply also to, to paraeducators.
Also, oh, anybody employed.
All staff, any, any employee.
Employee.
It could be any employee.
Okay, great, so, uh, we should educate.
I know, I'm, I'm putting things in my.
That I know, yeah, we could, um, alright, and so then the last one, and Dan actually, it might have Dan and Tricia talk a little more about this one, um, the promotion and retention of students, just cuz you guys have.
Yeah, I'm actually gonna let Lauren do it, cuz she's.
Yeah, well, this is, we're, so we're doing this SA, SAU wide, so.
You guys have a better grasp of this than I do, so take it away.
Yep, so this, we're doing this SA, SAU wide, um, to have this policy, so I believe this is, um, the first time that Brookline has had it, so it just wants to, to, to outline a little bit more how it's, if a parent requests to either promote or retain ahead or keep behind, what is our process, and because we say that that process is in the handbook, it's gonna be included in the handbook, and that's where you'll see the procedures for it, um, but this just kind of outlines a little bit of the, the criteria and the fact that that information will be included in the handbook.
Uh, so with some of my questions, just so you guys are aware, were like, how do we have these discussions, so this is what I was asking during the meeting, how do we have these discussions, this isn't a surprise, how is going, and so Dan and Tricia are very good about kind of laying out that like these are conversations that are started early in the year, they are not surprises to anybody, um, they're handled kind of as a team unit, like, if the request is made, that they will go to the team, the team will kind of talk about it, come back and kind of, so I just wanted to offer that as well for public, but also for you guys, like, it's not just like three weeks, schools ending and now we're having a conversation, I believe, Dan, you had said these start like way back in, to January.
Yeah, in January.
Yeah, so, so there is lots of opportunity for questions to be asked, for reasons to be given, for assessments to be done if needed, um, all of that.
And if the request is coming from the parent, then in the procedures in the handbook, you'll see that there's like a date, parents, I believe it's March first, I don't remember what we said, um, the parent has to make the request by a certain date, so that way there's time to have those discussions and go through that process.
Is that all of them?
That's all of them.
That's it. When I see my verbiage for this one.
Oh, bottom, bottom of page.
Lauren's quick question, that language, is that what we're putting in the handbook?
No, you're putting the procedure.
I think, I mean, does, does anybody have any changes that they wanna make with this language, is Dan, do you need to put this in the handbook this year?
No, this, this, this doesn't go in the handbook, this is ju, this is the policy as is, the, the procedure for that conversation is what goes in the handbook.
Okay, alright, so there, you do need feedback from us on the language or anything?
No, the board doesn't have to approve that, you just approve the fact that it's gonna be included in the handbook.
I'll make a motion to approve the recommendations of the Brookline Policy Committee as per